All right, everyone. Thank you for all coming for tonight. We're in Zonic. You want to be quiet, please, so we can go on. We're in Zonic Board of Appeal for tonight's agenda. It's May 22, 2024. And it is 6:31 PM. And we are at the multi-service center, room 520, Formula 320, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. As you all see, we have a very long agenda tonight, almost 18 between continued public hearing, discussion, and hearing. So whoever want to testify or make comments, whether the applicant, or the neighbors, or Nabara, just make it very specific, effective, right to the point, so we save some time, and of course civilized. Please do not feel comfortable to anyone in that room to speak if I don't give them the floor, so it doesn't get out of hand. So that being said, I'm going to call the meeting to order and make a roll call to my far right, Mr. Troy Larson. And by the way, we're all regular members, and there's no associates tonight. Mrs. Vanka Devanese, our clerk, Mr. Jim Akabachi, to my direct left, Mr. Richard Semple, also present Department Assistant, Ms. Sonia Raposo, our Commissioner, Mr. Paul Turner, and potential town planner, Mr. Josh.
Coordinator.
Coordinator. Just if you guys don't mind, the board, I'm going to have Sonia to help out, sit next to me. She's not a voting member, of course, just to help tonight, because we have so much to take notes for me, so I don't get busy. Want to sit here, please? If you guys okay with that?
As long as we get enough chairs. Do you need music to change chairs, or can you?
No, we could do without music.
The music stops, you're standing.
Yeah, Naz also, I see on the agenda that we have to approve minutes for 5:8, but we also have to approve from 4:24. That's...
Perfect.
Oh, all right.
Thank you.
And then the other thing, maybe you were going to say this already, Sonia, but if we could announce plan date changes, so that Patty, when she's recording this, has the dates on any plans that have been submitted and changed.
Okay. You know how I just like, like, you know? We get this right. All right, start from here. So, right as much as you can. All right, very well. We're gonna do some quick business on the minutes, the approval minutes for 5:8, 2024. What's the wishes of the vote, of the board?
I've reviewed the minutes. I find them to be acceptable as presented. I move to accept as presented.
Have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion here, none? All in favor, say aye. Mr. Larson?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Troy? I mean, sorry, Rich?
Aye.
Again, and myself, Naz, aye. So this is done. Now, what other minutes you said? Veronica?
There was a set of minutes that were continued...
Okay, you guys reviewed them? I didn't. You guys okay with that?
They have, we have, we don't have them yet. We'll have them next meeting.
Okay, very well. Yep. All right, let's go on preliminary business on Town Tavern, discussion about violation, potential violation of certificate of occupancy as of June 1st. Is anyone here from Town Tavern?
On Zoom.
What's that?
Online.
Okay.
Zoom.
All right, very well. Town Tavern, if you guys are aware of this matter, in October, November, General rehabbed the place, did a great job. He came for an occupancy. Unfortunately, he shuffled around the parking lot, so he changed the circulation on it. So we don't know if it's by the book or not by the book. And the Commissioner wasn't able to give him occupancy permit, but we agreed, and it says on occupancy permit, since November, since, when did we agree, when did we, on January 3rd, 2024, right? We agreed that he will do a site plan and bring it for approval, or site plan review or bring it approval. I talked to his engineer a couple, about two, three months ago, explained to him what he has to do, and either there's miscommunication, or they haven't been doing it. June 1st, that place will be open illegally. If the general, if Mr. Barry online, or his attorney?
No, Mr. Barry was unable to attend. This is Dave Newhall from Crocker Design Group.
Who's speaking? Who's speaking? Come up to the microphone.
All right, time to go louder. Speak louder and speak your name, please.
My name's David Newhall from Crocker Design Group.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we just, just making sure that we just need to file site plan review application along with the site plan, and that's all that you're looking for.
Yeah, site plan review application. I don't know, I talked to somebody with you, on your, with your firm about two, three months ago, and I explained, either talk to our Allen Major, our town consultant, or go on this website, and you see what's required. And you said, somebody from your firm, I don't know if it's you, said, you will, or he will, or she. And now we write on it, I mean, June 1st, it's next week, and you guys haven't done nothing.
Yeah, so we have the survey done, we have a plan prepared, now we just need to finalize and submit the application ahead of June 1st. I believe the occupancy permit said we just needed to file our site plan review application ahead of June 1st. It didn't say to be approved, but to be filed by then.
Okay, very well, to be filed. Is it gonna be filed before June 1st? It says site plan appro, file, okay, you're right, file, file application with the zoning board, very well. Can you file by June 1st?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so until then, I believe the Commissioner, he's not going to be able to issue any continuous occupancy until you file, and we go from there.
Okay, understood. I'll relay that to Mr. Barry.
Okay, very well. Now, hello? What's, what's his name again?
David.
David? No, it's not. Hello?
David Newhall.
Yep.
Listen, make no mistake, June 1st comes in, you don't file, that'd be serious consequences for that matter.
Absolutely, understood.
You have to address it, you can't let it go.
Yep, we'll address it.
All right, very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I understand, right, they have up until?
To file.
May, is it, how many days in May?
31.
31.
They have up until Friday, May 31st, to get this application in?
Yeah.
And Friday, the town hall is closed on Friday, so they actually have until the 30th of May. If there's no application by the 30th, on June 1st, they're closed.
That's up to the Commissioner. I mean, I would, it's up to him to close them or not, but this, this...
I just want it on the record.
Right, on the record, the Commissioner could close them down, or he could circulate this expired temporary occupancy to the ABC, to the selectmen, and to his mortgage company. And I'm sure ABC will come down from Boston and take that license away for serving liquor. So that's up to him to...
So that's a site plan review application?
For approval.
By May 30?
By May 30, yeah.
20?
Can we get a quick vote on that? Or a motion? Motion that we're all in agreement?
So moved.
Okay, we're all in agreement, motion, motion that we're all in agreement by Mr. Akabachi, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Richard.
You have a comment?
Yes, sorry, Commissioner.
I think I should condition it as a complete application.
I know it's not gonna happen.
I could tell by the way he was speaking on the phone, I think that he's just gonna submit that site existing condition plan and an application, and say, this is my site plan review.
All right, very well. We revise our condition. He will file by May 30. Complete application has to be submitted, and they have to be before the board, if a variance needed. If a variance not needed, they have to be, they'll go to planning board. So if a variance needed, they need to come before us by June 26. And they have to go on the agenda by June 26, with complete, with comments from town engineer and everything.
If I may, I need 21 days to publicize with Wareham Week.
30, if on the, on the 30, if they come on the 30, you have...
They have to be in by the 30th.
You have plenty for the 26.
So the day they bring it in, you have to run right to the newspaper, because that's...
I don't also remember I have...
You've got nothing else to do, do you?
Can we extend it for a week?
So say they drop it off on the 30th. So say they come in at 5:30 PM, I can't process it, right? So if I, I start processing on the 3rd, on Monday, I submit it to Wareham Week, they, they're gonna advertise on the 13th and the 20th, your next meeting, I can't, they need, you need seven, 21 days. Your next meeting is gonna be July?
10.
All right, very well. Whatever it is, you have to be before us by June 26. So you come tomorrow then.
If there's no variance or special permit, it's planning board. What's the date on that?
That's the problem. Let's see determination by the Commissioner.
July 10, okay.
All right, so...
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, because the occupancy permit just says to file by the 1st of June, why does it have to be the June 26 meeting, then?
Well, this is because you're late, that's why. We're doing you a favor.
But the permit just says to file, it doesn't say to be approved by the 1st. It's just a clarification that I'm looking for.
Follow our instruction, or you're gonna get yourself in trouble. If you have a problem...
Okay, no, I'm just asking.
What's that?
I was sorry, I was just asking. I was just making sure, so if I have to have it before the 30th, I just need to make sure I have it before the 30th.
Not to listen.
I hear two people talking at the same time, and usually when that happens, neither party hears the other. I think one person should talk at a time.
Are you talking to me and him?
I'm talking to the applicant.
Okay, well, I, I understand that the computer is a little odd, the Zoom.
I understand there's a lag, so let's...
But anyway, anyway, you have to be before the board by June 26, so I guess you gotta file tomorrow or Monday the latest. Okay, go back to your motion, Jimmy.
So I move that the application has to be submitted completely. When you say complete, you want with drawn plans of, right plan?
No, I mean, that's Sonia.
Is that what you're looking for?
No, no, no. Jimmy, this, this is our, our department. They have to file by Sonia in a way that they come before us on the 26, whether it's tomorrow morning, or Monday, or Tuesday, I don't care, they have to be before us on June 26, if it needs to be...
By July 10. By July 10, because I heard...
I need 21 days for some...
We, that's why I wanted to make sure...
Yeah, for Sonia's sake, I understand.
By July 10, very well. Unless it deems to go to planning board, that will be the Commission's determination.
Okay.
All right, continue with your motion.
So again, I move that the application has to be submitted to Sonia by May 30, to be able to be on the agenda for ZBA by July 10.
Okay, if it's deemed to be before the zoning, if it goes to the planning, that's separate issue. All right, do I have a second on a motion?
Second.
Second by Richard. Any discussion? I hear none. Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Naz, aye. So that's done.
Two, two.
You get the note, Sonia? Okay.
Thank you, have a good night. Sorry for the lag.
I didn't...
That was him saying he's sorry for the lag.
Yeah, no problem. All right, 27-20, JCMA Realty LLC for $169, minor modification, request for, and substantial minor modification request. All right, Counselor, it's yours.
Attorney Jillian Moran, 184, here for the applicant.
John Salerno, representing JCMA Realty.
Anthony Ferangiades, architect.
All right. All right, who do you have, Counselor?
Absolutely. You should have in front of you a request, which speaks to, a request for an insubstantial modification pursuant to the variance that was issued to us. We are allowed to seek this modification from you. We received some word that the plan that was approved differed from the plan that was created. As far as the actual structure and things like that, you know, the exterior, nothing's different, it's that the third, probably have it up there, right? Excellent.
I do, and I can explain.
Yeah, so I'll let Anthony specifically on that, but if you want to go into that, it's fine.
Sure. For the record, I'm Anthony Ferangiades, the architect on the project. This project was, is in construction now, and was designed 10 years ago. During the process, we had a variety of changes. The volume has, of the building has not changed, nor has the height or width. We have reallocated interior space and effectively created a third floor. I do have sections for comparison for everyone, that I can walk you through.
Yeah, I get it. Thank you, Anthony. So if you recall, if everyone's familiar with the site, I don't have to necessarily go through this, this is right next to the Glen Cove Hotel. It is a two-family that was approved by your board and appealed by a butter, and then it was gone through Superior Court, and there was a full decision...
Thank you.
Which the court ruled in our favor, that this fit the nature of the neighborhood. Now, the variance was for FAR, if you recall, floor area ratio. Our variance says we can have 51%. That's what was approved in the original plan. The Commissioner, I believe, drafted a letter that I saw online, that said that he's calculating that it's 60%. That's, so that's where he's seeing a change. So if we're going by those calculations, we're seeking a 9% increase, and it's on the same original variance. In my opinion, this is not a separate modification, we're not changing setbacks, we're not increasing the height, it's on the original variance, and it's not substantial to the, to the neighborhood. We're almost done, and we're really excited about it, so we're looking for a determination from this board, it's insubstantial, so then we're able to continue construction and move forward, and not have to go through, frankly, a burdensome process that we already went through.
All right, very well. You heard the Counselor. Troy, what do you think? So basically, they want to ask if we, it's okay with us for minor modification to increase the FAR with 9%. Veronica? It's a loft, right? It's like open to the bottom.
It's not increasing, it's not livable area, he's not creating a third unit. It's, you can see the, it's two units, and that will be a spot, you know, reading nook, something like that, but it's not gonna be a bedroom, it's not, you know, creating a third unit. We were approved for a two-family.
Interesting.
So we, Karen, we re allocated the volume of the second floor. So in the original plan, only 3.0 from 2015 to 2020, we had our ceiling height at 12 foot eight from the second floor. While we entered into construction, we realized how large the space that was.
Could you sign that, like, where it's going to be, or that you can be heard?
So we have reallocated the volume of the second floor, so it's all interior to the second floor unit, we're not creating a third floor unit, as a terminal mentioned.
Excuse me. Excuse me. The building inspector is objecting based on square footage, and you're talking to us based on cubic footage and volume. Could we, could you address the square footage per floor, please, for me?
Certainly. So we have 317 square feet of loft.
No, I, I think she is, she is saying they want the 9% enclosed floor area.
We do, yeah, we're not arguing.
They're not arguing that.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to get it in my head.
Yep, so we have 317 square feet...
Yeah.
On the, on the loft floor.
Right.
On the second floor, which is part of the loft...
Yeah.
It's 1,318 square feet.
13, 18?
13, 18. And on the first floor is 1,360 square feet.
1,360.
Yes.
One other thing I'd, I'd love to note is that the, if you recall through the original case, there actually, I believe it was around 60%, that, remember there was a unit there? And then there was a tiki bar, but that's, it's very similar to the original, I think it might be one more, 1% more FAR. The average FAR in this area is 59%. That came out in the court case.
Well, bottom line, they're asking for 9% increase in FAR. They do admit it's a usable level, usable space, and they're not arguing that, so going back to Veronica, what do you think?
I have no comment.
No, Jimmy?
I need a few more minutes.
Richard?
Nothing at this time.
Need on calculations?
So, in our decision, in our decision on whatever the date was, we granted relief to provide for 2744 square feet.
Okay.
They were only building 2678, so 2744, 1, 5. So they're saying 317, I'm finding 251 is the difference from what we granted. I just wanted to point that out, I just needed to figure it out myself. I don't know if, I'm, I'm taking...
Right.
I'm taking it to be gospel, that those are the right numbers.
I'm happy to share how they were calculated.
You, you know how to figure, you've done, you've figured out square feet before?
Yes.
I mean, they're asking for 9% bottom line, so what's your thought on that?
Okay.
You okay with it or not?
Yeah, if we need, if we need to put a, a deed restriction, that it could never be a third unit, if it's gonna make anybody feel better, but I'm, I'm not finding it a terrible, they're not adding a unit, they're not adding more cars, they're not...
Okay.
They're putting a loft, they had a 12-foot ceiling, and they're going down one end of the room and putting a loft, so...
Okay, very well.
I think we're, we're fine if that's something that the board wants, some sort of restriction. The actual title has the recording, and it says only two units, so, but I see what you're saying, if you want some sort of restriction.
It will be, it will be in the modification.
Yeah.
All right, anything else before we close? Can we get a motion to close it?
So moved.
Motion to close by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Naz, aye. Now wishes.
I'd like to know if the building commissioner has any comment before we take our final...
It's closed, publican is closed.
Okay.
It's up to us to say yes or no.
I make a motion to approve as...
You didn't want to, did you raise your hand? I didn't see you, Commissioner.
I have no comment.
Ah, okay, go ahead.
I make a motion to grant the insubstantial modification as requested.
All right, we have a motion to grant by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Abstain.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And I'm gonna abstain by carriage, you only need simple majority.
Thank you.
Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we got...
3, 0, 2. Naz and Veronica abstain.
3, 0, 2.
You get that, Sonia? Can you, Counselor, can you draft that decision?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Abstain begins with an A, right?
Abstain, A or U, whatever it is, you know what I mean? All right, we're gonna go to 2-18 Dakota Partners, 3102 Cranberry Highway.
Sorry, I have the next board, so I was like, I was, yeah.
Woodland Cove.
All right. Very well, naming address for the record.
Mark Palat with Dakota Partners, 235 Bear Hill Road, Waltham, Mass.
And Dominic Grinaldi with BSC Group, 803 Summer Street, Boston, Mass.
All right, very well. Before we go further, did you, we had a report from our consultant, and it doesn't look good.
Well, that was on Friday, I believe it was, and from then to now, it's a world of difference.
I understand.
We were, last time we were here, you asked that we come back when we're ready for the certificate of occupancy, and to get your town engineer to approve and look at it, make sure everything meets up to what you guys agreed to.
Well, we got, I, I read the report today, it's not good. If you recall, when you came with your Counselor, I made sure, I, I made sure to make a note on the minutes, that we'll have the right to reneg. The way, and I said to you clearly, I wouldn't start doing the work until the plans come out, and we see how it looks on the plan. You started the work, but it's irrelevant now. I am personally, we're running by the board, I'm very, very uncomfortable with the project unless, until I see how, we have those plans, how the site plan was proposed to begin with, and how is that built today. We really want to see an existing condition, so our consultant can compare it with the proposed, because walking on the site, I don't think you build it according to plan, not even close. I keep driving by there, I'm driving, it's way, I think it's way off. And I look on the records, there's not one report for your phases, for your construction phases on record. We didn't get any report from town engineer. This is your responsibility to contact, to contact town engineer, and your 53G account will pay for this, for phases inspection, like the hall, the stone, the drainage, the asphalt, the gravel, all these things, the water line, the sewer line, all these things needs probably total of 20 reports by the time you're done, that you're doing things, how the town asks you. I didn't see any reported during construction, nothing.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that, to tell you the truth. Obviously, since the last time we were here, I've been in contact with your town engineer almost weekly, about coming out, taking a look at it, and getting guidance to what we needed to take care of and fix during the process, which we've done. You know, suggestions of adding sod around the dry wells, because of them getting filled with, because of all the rain we've been having. We've done all that as well, we've done above and beyond, we've added additional dry wells where he asked for them during the course of it. As it stands right now, the, the space is all raked out, all the dry walls are in, everything is protected, all the, he asked for, the as-built plans have been done, spot elevations put onto it, the areas where you had concern have been additional rip ramp put in for the drainage in those areas. Everything has been done and worked and communicated with your town engineer through the entire process. His last visit was on Friday, which, yeah, there were some areas that were still in question, for most part, in his comments, it was purely an update, where most of it was done. So out of the 12 or 13 comments, I would say probably nine to 10 of them were just done already, he was just waiting for the final ones, which since then, all that stuff, as I mentioned to him, would be done. They worked over the weekends and got everything complete. The only thing I have left out there is really is to hydroseed. I have inspections I had today for generators that were done today, I had inspections for electrical for the well that was just done today, those will be backfilled in, and either hydroseated tomorrow or Friday.
I understand what you're saying. Engineer work, engineering, numbers, it might work. I don't think those drainage you guys did will work for a long time, they'll be clogged before you know it. But the aesthetics look of the whole project, this is a huge project, it has to look somehow appealing, decent. Right now, the way you look at it, it's like hills everywhere, you're trying to catch[1713.32] Right now, the way you look at it, it's like hills everywhere, you're trying to catch water. It's, let me finish. And, and it's aesthetically, now the way it is, a kid cannot go out there and play frisbee. You have a generator here, a manhole sticking out of the ground, transformer sticking out of ground, then a big deep steep for drainage, all these things, this is my opinion. I wanna run it by the board, see what they think. And, and that's why I made sure in the previous meeting, in the minutes, I said we have the right to re-nag in our, in our decision on the minor modification, because I think it's gonna be a major modification. I wanna start by Troy, what do you think?
I agree with you.
Veronica?
I have no comment.
No comment. Jimmy?
I read the correspondence from the, from Mr. Cudero, and yeah, there were 12 or 13 items, and the 12 or 13 items, it was, yeah, I saw this plan, but it's not stamped. I still don't have this from an architectural, uh, uh, landscape design. I still don't have this. So, I'm not comfortable voting on something that the last official written word we've received is his 13 things that are wrong. It's like when I send a teenager into his bedroom to clean the bedroom and he says, yeah, it's clean, and I open the closet and everything falls out, and I look under the bed and everything's under there, the bedroom's not clean, it's just shuffled. It's, it doesn't work, so you won't have my vote to say, I can tell you right now, based on what I saw today, and based on the letter I saw from the town engineer, my vote is in the negative.
Richard?
I, I do have some concerns, I pulled in there today, took some pictures, walked around. There's a, I think it's a building, must be building three. It seems like the whole building itself is in a hole. And any of the runoff is just gonna go around that building, it looks like the first floor could turn into a, a waiting pool. So I'm, I'm concerned the way, why is that building so low in the ground?
I believe it wasn't built right, and nobody was watching.
So,
That's why I would like to see.
What would be the remedy to get that building from not being down in the hole, for me to say?
The remedy is, like I said in a couple of previous meetings, you need a serious architect to design, redesign, I know it sounds harsh, redesign the whole site plan to make it look like the intention of that building to be low. You might, they might have to end up ripping these roads and drop them. Because they, they patching everything, the sidewalks, the, the drainage. There's not one building sitting right to the, the way, with the drain, with the sidewalk, nowhere. Everything is patched and finigaled, try to make it work. It might work this summer, but I don't think it will ever work, but besides that, I'm not very comfortable with it, because this is not what we approved. This is a massive project, and we don't want the town to have to deal with, with the junk after. And, for instance, if this, if we have a massive rainstorm, these floors, you got about 30 apartment on the first floors, they all gonna flood. If we have massive rainstorms, like a 100-year flood or a 25-year storm, and then the border house will have 50 phone calls, all these people on the first floor flooded. Whether, I, I build a lot of houses, I know you did too, but I know water could get pretty quick and, and I know drainage, and I, I do them, I build them, I know drainage, I know pitching.
This has all been designed, it's all been designed, it came for you,
All right, very well.
Eight years ago, and it was all approved.
But it hasn't come to us, you're saying it's come to us, we don't have it.
Jimmy, if I may, go ahead.
It came to you, you guys approved it, we went through extensive review during that period of time from the design for both the civil and the architectural. Then it was brought to our attention about the 5% slope by the building commissioner, which is rightly so, and we did, we corrected that. And since then, it's been raining cats and dogs in this state, in New England, and there has been no flooding inside the units, it's all been, been managed properly within the space. Unfortunately, we don't have any grass in place to help with that, but, so it did get clogged with some sediment, because, which is just nature, it's normal.
Oh, all right.
So it's been cleaned out, and then per the recommendation of the town engineer, well, about putting sod around it for now, until the rest of this grass stabilizes and gets in place, that's a great idea, which we've done, because it will lessen the issue of sediment getting into that and being a long-term maintenance issue. So, all been calculated, all been designed to manage the water properly, and it has been doing that all along. And I, that's why I hire a professional licensed engineer to do this.
All right, I want, I want, I'm sure the board agrees, I want an existing condition with elevation of every building to compare it with what you proposed.
We have all that, it's all on record.
Okay.
We've filed the, the foundation plans, they've all been filed with top.
The foundation plans were filed with setbacks, never been the elevations on them. Which is not our fault, this is not our problem, it's for, it's up, it's, it's your problem to, to manage the elevations of building. Our commissioner's problem, job is to make sure you meet setbacks to hand you the building permit, not the elevations. This, if you mess up with the elevation, this is your problem, not ours.
I don't, I don't quite follow you.
If you build the foundation three feet deep, but it meets setback, the commissioner will hand you the building permit, that's not his problem, because you build it too low or too high. He's concerned you meet setbacks, so you don't need advance. So if you build it high or low, that's not his fault. And it seems to me that that building built too low, all these buildings were built too low. Nobody is watching, either they're built too low or the road built too high, something is not matching. There's no way an engineer, you had a quite reputable firm who came with the plans. There's no way this firm designed the roads and those buildings with the, with the entrance, everything like this, no way. They're not, they wouldn't be in business today if they did that. So we need, we need those things before we go any further.
I, I.
We don't have as-bills, we don't have an elevation.
We have as-bills.
You have as-bills, but we need existing conditions with elevations.
We have, again, we have existing conditions with the elevations on them. Everything's on there, spot grade elevations throughout, we have foundations with top, top of foundation walls on them, everything's been uploaded to the file system.
Do I have them on you?
I have them on me, yes.
We have hard copies, actually.
Phil, you wanna come, you don't have, Phil, you wanna come forward, please?
I don't need one.
Have you got a copy of these?
They sent in PDFs of the foundations with just setbacks.
Thank you.
And then I requested elevations, which they did supply.
I'll take, I'll take the electronic copy.
Phil? Can somebody, you wanna take my copy?
I have some, I'm good, Mr. Chair.
All right, let's, uh, we need, we need access to the proposed building, how are we gonna get access to that? But the, the plan that was, it was approved. You know, I, I don't think this is the right time to do this. This is the town engineer, we have 18 hearings, the town engineer gonna take and study. I don't think this is the right time to go through these plans and go through, because regardless, we're not gonna make a decision.
Have you gone through these?
So, Mr. Chair, for the record, Phil Cordero from Allen and Major Associates, to be very, very quick. Uh, I, I did meet onsite with the applicant and BSC on Friday, we walked the site, they gave me the as-bills, as I put in the summary to you. It was lacking a, a number of bits of information, they revised them. I received these via email a couple of days ago, at the same time I believe Sonia did. Um, I, I received then an updated set, uh, today, uh, from the applicant. I have reviewed them. They, they are in keeping with the change plans that this board approved a couple of months ago.
Right.
But they're not in keeping with the original
Exactly.
site design plans, just to be clear.
Let's be clear also, we approved, if they make this drainage and it works, but I made sure I reserved the right to re-nag on the deal, worrying about the aesthetic looks of the place. I made sure, and it's on the minutes, that we have the right to re-nag if we don't like the way it looks.
You, you did, and to your point, there is no debate, there are a number of hills and valleys that are now created to solve the drainage problem out there. So they, they came up with a solution on the drainage, they implemented it as they indicated they would. It did create depressions at the face of all of the buildings, it did create high and low points around the buildings because of transformers, generator pads, irrigation control panels and the like. So it is, it is patched together to solve a problem. Is it in full keeping with the original approved plans? No. But they are, they did do the work in keeping it, in keeping with what they presented to you that they would do to solve the drainage issue. Whether or not you agree with the aesthetics, I, I'll defer to the board.
Yeah, I, I drove through it today, I got a problem when I drive through any project and I see the sidewalk is higher than the floor, than the living floor, then you go in a hill, then you go up. And those six-inch drains, I don't think how long they're gonna hold, and plus, it's, it's just the whole yard disappeared. And we talked about infiltration on the driveway going to the, what do you call it, the house, the, the,
The clubhouse.
The clubhouse?
Yes, sir.
They diverted that water into the, into the catch basin, it wasn't infiltrated. It needs to be, TS, it needs TSS removal before it goes there. So, it just, it just, and the whole yard is ruined now. Cause you got a generator here, you got a sewer manhole sticking up in the ground like a foot and a half, generator in the middle yard, now they have a big catch basin, no kids can play there, nobody can throw frisbee, nothing. It's like running into a hell. The whole yard is, and, and the whole idea for having, we redesigned the whole project to have a courtyard for the families can live somehow.
That, that's intact, that's in the middle circle, which is larger than probably a, a football field, much larger than a football field, flat, you know, with a slight slope to it, but nothing protruding, nothing sticking out of it at all. That's, that's, that's a massive field in the middle, with a huge circle going around the middle. Nothing in there.
We, we have, you had, or your, your, whoever, God rest his soul, Mr. O'Neill had that contact with the town that he brought us a certain plan that we granted. We don't mind deviating couple of inches, but not feet, not feet. I don't mind, like, if it's off a couple of inches, no problem, but, but the town made the deal and we went all our, our way, we gave you a lot of waivers, we worked with you, we give you everything. It's a very expensive project, at least you can build it right.
It is very expensive, you're 100%, it's very expensive. And the changes, the changes that were made created a lot of these deviations and elevations to get to that 5% slope that was pointed out to us by the building commissioner. And that has been achieved, and it works from an engineering standpoint. The calculations have gone through by your town engineer from drainage-wise, and everything works.
It might work, it might work, but this is, it might work, I bought a beautiful car and they put a different, I want certain engine, they put a different engine, I'm sure it works, but that's not what I make a deal to. We made a deal on a certain plan, and this isn't two, three units, this is 150 units.
Correct, and we, we, we came here in front of you with this change, the modification.
I made sure, I wanna reserve the right to re-nag on the deal if I don't like how it looks. I don't like it, if you could convince the other four, good for you, I'll sign off.
I came to you with, you know, extra landscaping to add on to, you asked for, I've done everything you've asked for on this, and you're gonna come to me and now at the last minute and say, I don't like it, so you gotta tear the whole thing out and redo the whole thing? I mean,
It's a change you took to remediate, and I, I don't like it, I wanna go by my board, ask my board.
It's costing me hundreds of thousands of dollars every single month on this project. I got people that have been looking to get into the space. We've gone through every hoop possible and made sure, whatever buttons I had to take care of, and anything you asked for was done.
Sir, I, I totally understand, I'm a businessman, and I hate when I lose business, and I hate when I lose money.
This is beyond.
I watch my projects, you didn't watch your project.
Yes, we have been watching our projects.
You didn't watch your project, nobody's watching, was watching that project when it's getting built, nobody was watching.
There's a lot of people watching, unfortunately, we had a lot of turnover due to COVID and everything else.
Anyway, Troy, go by Troy, what do you think?
I have no comment.
Veronica?
Um, I think we wouldn't be making a decision tonight anyway, because we had talked about when we get plans and, and, uh, discussion the day before, that we don't have time, so.
This is dated today.
Yeah, exactly, so, I have no comment.
I, yeah, Richard?
I agree, these were just given to us, and we're not trying, we're not doing that anymore, so.
I'm, I'm not willing to vote tonight, if I was voting tonight, I've already stated that my vote would not be in the affirmative. Because it says May 22 on here, I don't think it's appropriate to vote tonight. But I'd like to make the comment that you've said repeatedly that you've done everything we've asked you, and I heard this man ask you several times for a plan by a landscape architect and a stamp, and we don't, I, I haven't seen it.
We submitted them in last time.
I haven't seen it.
For the project modification, we submitted them. We brought them in last time when you,
Did it have a stamp on it?
Yes, they were submitted and stamped.
Like I said, we need to run these by, this is, this is what, this is what we're gonna do, I'm gonna be fair to you. We were gonna compare them to the proposed plan. If the elevations on the road and on the foundation are within inches, you'll have my vote. If they're not within inches, I'm talking two, three inches off, not a feet, two, three feet, you're not gonna get my vote on that.
But we can't vote tonight, I just don't see it.
So Phil, if you don't mind, you can go onsite, fill up the plan that's, that's, that was presented, take one of these for you, and please compare them to us, and tell us what we're looking at.
Yes, sir.
I, I'm, I'm very sorry to bring this up to you, I know it's harsh, but.
I have one more question on this.
Yes.
Is the community building occupiable today?
The, right now, as it stands right now, the community building, buildings D, E, and F are ready for a final inspection. I misspoke, sorry, D has a couple inspections left, that's probably been tomorrow. But other than that, they're ready to go, to be inspected for final.
Is the community building D, E, or F?
It is the community building, just the community building, D, E, and F are apartment buildings.
Is the community building available for occupancy today?
Yes.
So we could go down there and open the building and, and if you,
I hope, I hope you can't go down there and open the building, and that means I have bad security, but, yes, the, I got, I got equipment inside there.
If we went down there on an inspection and you opened the building for us when we went inside,
Yeah.
it would be a facility ready to be used the, the day that the first time it moved in?
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that was a question that I had, I didn't, hasn't been discussed, but I know early on, the comment was that
Yeah.
the building would be ready.
Yeah, we have the playground also, I think the only, I, I believe the gym equipment's in there, and they're setting up the, the office spaces as well, I think. Building commissioner made a little better than I do.
We're gonna,
I'm gonna enter that building.
Okay.
Anybody online need anything to say?
Right now, Phil, the sooner you have answers for us, please post them, have Sonia, we go online, and I guess we'll see you back on the 12th. Now, wherever you have comments, please share it with the applicants, Phil. And I, if the thing is not within inches, I think you have a problem. I have to sit back.
We need a motion to keep,
Go back to the drawing table.
To continue to June what?
June 12th, they wish to come back. After, after Phil review.
I'll, I'll move to continue until June 12th. Subject to review of the town engineer.
All right, do you have a motion now?
I got, you got a motion.
I mean, do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica, all in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazia, aye.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Building four, in the middle, and building four on your project. Not, not, I'm not picking on, but you got something going on with your roof, it looks like your plywood popped, the shingles are getting ready to pop, so it should be something that you look at.
Sir, which one is, do you, so sorry, they wrote my letters, so I don't know which one.
If you look right at building four, right in the middle, you look at the roof, you'll see it pop. I'll take a look around, Autumn.
I'm just, just, it's the roof, that's the only, I'm just trying to help.
I just can't know which one it is.
I'm gonna move forward to the continued public hearing. Who's here tonight wanna continue a hearing?
Gillian.
Gillian, you have continued hearing? Uh, which one?
3923.
Yeah.
Which one you wanna continue?
They're all in order, so.
The, one, two, and three are you?
One, one at a time.
Yes, one, two, three, four.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, this is on Cranberry, Warham Cranberry Highway LLC. This is, if you can recall, the old De Angelos that now we're seeking to do a tropical smoothie, I'm happy.
Wanna continue that?
Yes, can I?
That's the second one, 2544 Adaya.
Yep.
And what's the third one?
The number three, cause I don't have an answer from town council.
Main Street?
I don't have an answer from town council on that.
Okay, and what's the fourth one?
No, that's it.
Three? All right, let's go back to the first one, 39-23, Warham Cranberry LLC. And that is the old De Angelo.
Yes.
Where are you taking this? Why you wanna continue it?
Because.
Are they considering to do site plan review?
We have the whole thing done, and, and I submitted it to Sonia.
Oh, you did?
It, everything you want.
All right, very well.
So, they did the work, they, you know, this was going back and forth, they needed site plan review.
Get a net soon, and we'll,
Yep, all the packets are there, you know.
When do you wanna come back on that?
We, our preference would be June 26, so hopefully, and I do need, um, Mr. Cudero's quote on what the fee would be for the 53G account, and they'll set that up.
Coordinate with Sonia.
Yeah, that's all set, it's ongoing, it's going.
Anyone in the public for this matter? Anyone in the public or on Zoom for this matter? Okay, I hear none. Troy, any comment on this?
No.
Veronica?
Uh, yes, we don't have deadlines on this.
But we're gonna ask her for that.
Yeah, okay. Um, so that is June 5, so we need, and I'm willing to, if you guys wanna extend it. If I'm asking for June 26 for the hearing, do you wanna extend it? End of July?
July 31.
Okay.
So make sure you send an extension, July 31.
Yep.
So Jimmy, what do you think?
I'm good.
Veronica, back to you, you good?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Good.
All right, that being said, can we, Commissioner, you don't have any? All right, that being said, can we, Commissioner, you don't have anything on that, do you?
No comment.
Josh? All right, let's make a motion to continue till June 20.
6.
26.
So moved.
With an extension on the time for the board to make a decision by July 31st?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Veronica, second by, no, we have a motion by Veronica, second by Richard. All in favor, she, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, aye. See you on that matter on 6/26. Okay, very well. Next one, 524 Walid Al-Daya, the site plan review, 2544 Cranberry Highway.
Yep, the update on this, which I appreciate and you guys voted to allow him to have a partial opening for the stickers, so, and I appreciate, thank you to the commissioner as well, so that's rolling. But we are still working with the town engineer. He submitted his review to us, so our engineer is going to go back. I am requesting that one to be June 26th as well because I'll be here.
Okay, board, board comments. Troy?
No comment.
Veronica?
Just the same comments regarding extensions because.
Extension.
July 31st?
Yep, we can do the July 31st if that's sufficient for you guys.
I'm good.
Richard?
Good.
Good. Anyone in the public for, or on Zoom for this matter? Against or for this one? None. So, okay, let's get a motion to continue to 26.
So moved.
So moved by Richard, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Veronica, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, Nazir, aye. Akari, 6/26. Third one, 31-23 Angela McCoon, 386 Main Street.
So I'm requesting, I guess it's June 12th, so that'd be two weeks, because I'm hoping that we can have an answer from town council. If you recall, this is one where we were reconsidering 3D6.
Did you apply to planning board yet?
No, no, because I want written, no, no.
Why didn't you?
Because I haven't gotten anything from the town that says that this is what we need to do and I think that it's prudent for the town to submit something to town council.
We gave you a vote on that. Town council, I understand his legal opinion, but we the last stop, we the one who makes the calls. He could tell us it's legal, illegal, he like it, don't like it, doesn't matter. It's what we vote. We appreciate, we respect.
It puts the town in a liability. So I think continuing it for two weeks.
We're responsible for our action.
Yes, but I don't think it's unreasonable to extend for two weeks. I've reached out to him several times and maybe someone else at the board can speak to him.
Troy, what do you think on that?
I don't have any comment on that.
Veronica?
I think if, could we take a vote as a board to decide if this is going to go to council? To have, hear what they say?
We already made a vote on that.
That it was going to go to council?
We already vote on this that it's, that if she needs to appeal it, she needs to go to planning board. We already voted on it. It's said, done, and closed. So what's your wishes? Do you want to give her an extension or not?
Well, if she's not before us, why do we need to give her an extension if she's going to planning?
The public, is the public hearing still open?
Yeah, it's an open public hearing.
Yeah, because we waiting for her to go to planning, so we.
But I am for coming back to us?
It'll come back, if they say it's, it can be.
Sorry.
Okay, I'm fine with an extension.
Okay, Jimmy?
I'm good.
Richard?
I'm good.
Anyone in the public for or against the matter? For or against? Yes, ma'am, come forward.
Does this, does this property stand like in limbo until there's a decision?
No, they could do what they want.
They got the forefamily that they can, yeah, okay.
Print it, they could fix it, whatever they want. It's existing.
Unfortunately, our lawyer's not here tonight.
That's, that's okay.
Plus he's online. Everybody on like.
All right, sit down, ma'am, and state your name.
Patricia Nelson. I'm one of the members of the trust for 181 High Street.
Yes, ma'am.
We are, were under the impression that this had been closed and could not come back to the zoning board in this manner, to the zoning board of appeals in this manner.
Correct.
It had to go through the, and that's where we left it the last time.
It has to go to planning board, yes, ma'am.
Exactly, so by giving them an extension, it's giving it open.
If the, if they get, if they get, the planning board grants them, grants the counselor or the applicant that they can reopen this matter, they will come back, they have the right to come back before us. But they have, they have the first step with the planning board.
Has to go to the planning board first.
So you will be notified in mail, all these things when she goes.
So it has to, we have to be notified as a butters then?
Of course.
For anything new that comes through?
Absolutely.
Okay, because we were under the impression that there was a two-year waiting period?
Exactly, but they have the right to appeal this. If they go to planning board and the planning board feels it doesn't need to, they could come back.
All right, but again, we would be notified.
You will be notified with the green cards, with the signature, all that. Same thing before, you will know.
All right, so you're going to put it off now until, for two weeks and that would be enough time?
It's irrelevant, we don't make decision if we're gonna, we're not going to grant the applicant the permission. We're just going to see if she wants to hear from town council to go to planning board. So if the board wish to give her an extension, it's for her to file with the planning board.
The planning board, so the town council is irrelevant at this point as far as you're, as far as what you're.
As far as I'm concerned, his decision is.
And if I may through the commissioner to clarify, I asked, whatever you vote for the extension, that's fine, but I don't think that the town council's opinion is going to be irrelevant in this matter. If it comes up to something, it's not going to be irrelevant. I think if we get an opinion back, it should be added into the record.
We have our vote. I don't care what he says, sorry.
Well, it would go to the record.
I understand, we made a vote, we take, we're responsible for it. We're not going to re-nag in our vote. That isn't how it works. I do, and I respect your opinion and your advice, but we already made a vote, we're responsible for our vote. Thank you, ma'am. All right, so what's the wishes? How long, how long extension do you need, counsel?
Looking for June 12th.
June 12th?
Yep.
Okay, do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
I have a motion to continue 21-23 for 386 Main Street till June 12th, 2024. Do I have a second on Jim's motion?
Second.
Second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Do we need an extension? We don't need an extension on that matter, do we? There's nothing, it's open until you go there.
Decisions, but yeah.
All right, very well. Joseph Sergi, is this you, counselor?
Yes.
Very well. Continued public hearing on 10-24 Joseph Sergi, appeal on 2 Sarabath Lane. Again, name an answer, name an address for counselor, just for the record.
Attorney Gillian Morton, 184 Main Street.
All right, the public hearing still open?
Yep.
Can you brief us what happened?
Of course. This was read into record, there was a non-quorum, so I don't think there was any discussion regarding it, so I'll start from the beginning.
Yep.
In your packets that I provided, you have what we are here appealing. So we have a notice from the building commissioner that I believe is dated January, sorry, I'm just getting all my files together. Here we are. So it is dated January.
January 18th.
Perfect, yes. So we received that notice. This was a question, this property is owned by my client, Joe Sergi, who has a small landscaping, does hardscaping business. This is his personal residence. This is where his family is, his wife, and so what had happened, I think there had been a complaint that the commissioner needed to respond to, that there shouldn't be a operation here in regards to a business. So this unfortunately puts us in that pickle where we have a business certificate that was issued for this site, 2020. And I know you guys have been dealing with that quite a bit, but there is, this is actually the one that was signed. So now we're in a zone that does not allow, which he had said was, I believe.
It's R130.
Service, huh?
R130.
Yeah, he said service, but this is what the use, he said it was. Service establishment, not involving manufacturing on site. Now, I received another letter in April where he switches what he believes the use is. So, you know, I'm appealing one letter, now we're changing the use. I'm fine to go if you want me to go with whatever use it is. My position's still the same, that this is his personal residence, that under the code, he is allowed to have a residential use where his home office, he's doing his billing, he's not seeing clients there. This is where.
He has equipment outside?
He has, actually I have for you. One of the comments in the letters was like marked up trucks, okay? This is what the truck is. That's, you guys can see this. It's not like a big flashy thing. He has him and maybe another person working for him. So we're in a position now that we are seeking for the appeal of this. We don't believe that it is this new use that he's saying it's a general contractor yard. That's the new use that is being determined. I don't know if anyone has been on the site at all to see.
I drove by.
Okay. So you should probably have seen, I guess there were some plows, there's a truck, his pickup truck, and you know, mower, he uses for his personal use, but this is not a full-blown, full-service landscaping company. So I understand what the commissioner has to do when, you know, there are people complaining about it, but go around the town of Wareham, there are many residential areas that have 18-wheelers, have big trucks right at their residence. So, you know, I don't want to start, you know, I know it's a slippery slope, you allow one, but this isn't, I don't think he should be chastised because where he lives and where he keeps his equipment. And we're not talking about tons and tons of trucks.
Can I ask a question? I don't know if you're familiar, but when I drove down, I drove down Charge Pond Road, I came to the gate, there seems to be a driveway on the right-hand side that leads into that area, and then there's also, when you go around on Sarabath Lane, you look from there. So is that all connected, that whole one area? Because it looks like the driveway comes right down next to the gate that's at the end of Charge Pond Road, it's a dirt driveway, it goes up, it seems to go to a building and I believe it's the building, and one of the prints we looked at the last time, it's over by, it sits adjoining Miles Nander State Forest. So I was just wondering if that is a driveway that goes in there or is that just a cut that goes around?
Are you talking about the garage that's in the back?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, that is his property and that is something we're working with the building department regarding that. It was, it was put together and we've submitted things to the commissioner, we're still working on, he wants a structural engineer to have it stamped. So, but right here, we're in front of you on this appeal, you know, for him to have to stop his livelihood and remove everything, I, you know, I think it's pretty.
All right, let me, on the residential uses, you need a special permit.
Is my phone on?
Yeah, my phone's on. Commissioner, I'm looking at R130, a special permit, it can be done with special permit zoning, home occupation or home office or profession or trade conducted by the resident of the premises. Also educational use and institutional, it's not utilities, antenna, special zoning, onsite solar, energy is yes, everything is a no. The only thing, special wireless communication, special zoning, public utility structures, special zoning, public utilities, everything else is no. Or convenience score, you could do convenience store with a special permit. What do you classify as?
I did change it to a contractor's yard is what he, that's what is out there. So the attorney does have photographs of just pickup trucks and a plow or two. I have pickup, I have pictures of six-wheel trucks, one, two, three, four, five, six of them lined up in his front yard. So the neighbors have numerous pictures is on the complaint, we have videos of the business coming and going. It's a dead-end street, so you can very easily, the house out front can see the cars, the activity come, activity go. As far as a home occupation, yes, you're allowed to have an office in your home, your private home. No external evidence of the business, except a permitted two-by-two sign. That's the only external evidence.
What do you think, counsel?
Well, certainly we have a differing opinion. That's why we're here, we're appealing. I don't think it's right, I think it goes to the freedom of someone's lot and clearly he has three acres, he's a by right, you know, lot. This isn't a tiny, small lot in onset. So I think you have the deference as the board to decide which, you know, if there's a small lot in onset and it has 10 trucks, okay. But this is three acres. I mean, we can hear from the neighbors, but I think to have his livelihood taken from, and he has a building, you know, had a certificate back, this is many years he's had this. This is not just the first one. It can, again, put the town in a position that's not, not good.
I know, business certificate, when will it expire?
Actually, it expires December 2024, so.
Okay, so it's gone until December 24th, but I see what the commissioner says, that would require a variance.
On, on his determination of use. So we're arguing that it's not, and my.
I know it's a three-acre lot, but it doesn't, it's the R130, you cannot run a business, evident business. You could do like a bookkeeping inside, maybe hairdresser, one chair, something like that.
Yeah, if I may, in my original petition, I did say we were fine to go for a special permit and that was the home office profession or trade represented by the resident of the premises. It doesn't just say office, it says trade. So, and then it's an argument of it's substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, so.
But he does landscaping, right?
It's mainly hardscape, so, you know, he does have some trucks, he's not meeting with clients there.
No, I understand, but he uses the truck, he parks, he runs it as his office. So he parks his commercial trucks there, he meets clients there?
No, he does not meet clients there.
But we don't know that. Okay, he does his books there, okay, let's put it this way, he does his books, but he But he has his trucks in there. I'm sure his employees go there, pick up his trucks. If he has six, seven of them, he can drive them by himself. But let's run, let's run it by the board, see what they think. Troy, what do you think?
I'd like to hear from the neighbors.
All right, Veronica?
I know this road well, and it's all residential. The fact that he's at the end of a very long residential street is not a great position to be in, especially when you have those big, heavy equipment going in and out of there if he's running a landscaping business. It's just my thought on that.
Didn't you give him, get him permit on Charge Pond Road?
It's different, it's a different client.
Jimmy, what do you think?
So, I'm, I'm listening. Couple of things I heard, one was there were trucks parked in the front lawn. I heard that there's people that have pictures, but I haven't seen any pictures. You showed a picture of a pickup truck with a magnetic sign, I think that's what you showed. I haven't seen yet, I haven't seen any, doesn't mean they don't exist. So, he has, he has a landscaping and construction company. His business is Serge's Landscaping and Construction LLC.
Yep.
And his, and his place of business is to Sarabeth Lane, okay. So, how many trucks does he have that he owns, that he's got registered to to Sarabeth Lane?
So-
Two?
Mr. Serge is here if he wants to, want to come up? And I think the commissioner had said there was six, but I don't know if that's, is that correct?
State your name for the record.
My name's Joe Serge.
Joe Serge, and your address?
To Sarabeth Lane.
Okay, go ahead, ask.
I have one commercial six-wheeler that I use to plow for the town of Wayham, that's it. I don't even use it for landscaping. And two pickup trucks and the smaller truck are all not registered commercial. They're all non-commercial plates. And I have a sticker on it that says Serge's Landscaping, this picture below the window. And then I have Escalade in the yard, which is my wife's. Then I, my kids got licenses, so they got vehicles.
Okay, so how many trucks get used for the landscaping?
One a day. I have one employee.
One, one employee and one, so you are operating out of there?
Most of the, my guy usually meets me, my, my employee meets me on the job site, because he lives down the Cape.
You guys saw that?
Yeah, they passed it to me. So, this picture that's being passed around appears to me on a quick look, and I'm, I'm just making some guesses here. Looks to me like you took your trucks and parked them all on your front lawn, made a website saying it's been a great year or something like that. So, no, got my guys, it says, I know you only have one guy, but it says guys. It's been a great year, my guy-
I want to say that's pictures from 2019.
2019. So, you still have all those vehicles?
No, I got rid of a few of it.
Could we see that picture, because I don't, okay.
I don't have a publisher.
Can you, yeah, please.
So, you have a bobcat?
Yep.
You have a six-wheeler dump truck?
Yep.
You have a pickup truck for yourself to drive. There's four, there's four snow plowing rigs in that picture. And then the six-wheeler, the yellow six-wheeler, that could probably plow snow too.
Yeah, I use that to plow for the town of Wayham.
Okay. And they're all, they can't all be registered as, as non-commercial vehicles?
They're all registered non-commercial, except the yellow one.
They can be, but with a regular-
I know, I, if it's, if it's a 250 or less, it can be registered with a, I get it. So, one's yours, one's your wife's, one's your bob, no, not your bobcat, and there was-
I got my kid, two kids.
Two kids.
And then I got the yellow truck that I'm not using.
So, do you regularly, my question is, do you regularly put all your trucks and plows and equipment on your front lawn?
No.
That was a picture-
That was just setting up for a picture, getting ready for winter.
You have all that equipment, and you were proud of it. It's, well, there's probably $500 or $600 worth of equipment there. Maybe more if you put new tires on them. I get it, it's, you know, so, and people own equipment, they, they like it, they're proud of it, I, I get it. I, I just, I, I think the neighbor's complaint would be that if there's five or six trucks leaving there on a daily basis, which is not.
All right, let's, we'll, we'll hear from neighbors. So, counsel, you don't agree it's a variance?
I don't believe that it's a contractor yard. I went under the impression in my letter that we would seek-
Mr. Serge agrees that he runs a business from there.
Yeah, there is a valid business certificate. I'm talking about the determination, I disagree with the commissioner saying it's, that it's a, you know, it's not Morse lumber, it's not lumber around.
I understand, so apparently, the commissioner, he has some complaints. So, why don't we listen to the public, see what they say? All right, anyone here want to speak in favor of this matter? In favor, anyone against? Who's gonna, who wants to speak? I want to come forward, sir, ma'am. Just come forward, sit down, state your name and address for the record. State your name and address, please.
Ted Nagel, 309 Charge Pond Road.
Yeah.
Charlene Nagel, 309 Charge Pond Road.
Okay, so, all right, let me, what you complain about, and how you see that?
Well, you know, I have something written, written here, and here it is. My wife and I have been living at Charge, 309 Charge Pond Road for 37 years. Joe Serge knew he was moving into a residential area when he moved in. It was in 2007. Our property is located on Aquifer Protected District. Our objective is to have his business removed and to protect our property values, drinking water, neighborhood values, basically. Mr. Serge has been living at To Sarabeth since 2007 on three acres of land. Our backyard faces the side of his house. Mr. Serge has been a nuisance since he moved in through intimidation, harassment, basically to get what he wants, to keep our mouths shut. He can do what, unhesitant whatever he wanted to. He's had chickens, he's had goats, he's had horses. We've found things thrown in our yard. He's tried to clip us going down the road, he knows that we complain about him. I could continue on this in depth, but maybe you get the idea, we've been harassed. February 3rd, February 2011, Mr. Serge had to be reminded that he lives in a residential area by the Board of Selectmen. He was sent a cease and desist order to remove his vehicles from the property. Joe was during salt, he was washing his vehicles, basically repairing his vehicles in his front yard. We're listening to ear guns, it's just a nuisance, listening to it. We move, we actually spent $10,000 more to move into this residential area because we wanted to live in a residential area, not a commercial area. Now, it's some, somebody's just doing what they want down there, you know? There's laws against this, bylaws, this is what we thought. So, Mr. Serge was told that he was going to be fined $300 a day if he did not remove his vehicles. He did eventually move his vehicles. My wife and I met with Paul Turner to discuss a 30-by-60 metal building he built. He cleared, basically, it looks like he's cleared close to an acre of land for this building, for his trucks to be parked around, his trailers, he has multiple. You really have to go down there and see what he has, he has quite a bit. What he was saying now, he was soft-soaping it. Uh, da-da-da-da, he had permit, making, he's made misleading statements on his first permit. He was saying that the building was a carport. He was saying that it was only $6,500 for the building, way more than that, and it's not a carport. It's a building, outright building. He's, since then, he has resubmitted for another permit. I believe Paul said he couldn't okay it because it's too big for him to say it was, to permit it, I believe.
Just talk to us, sir, you can't talk to him.
Oh, okay, well-
He, he has a permit for the building.
Well, Paul has sent, sent him cease and desist permits.
Okay.
Let's see, my wife and I, I want, one is the business, his commercial vehicles, we'd like it brought back. They were given permits to build down there. They had to be one house, a single-family home on three acres of land, I believe, to disperse the nitrogen, it's on an R 130. They really didn't want the houses in there. I mean, but they did. And Joe's basically done what he used to want down there, it's-
All right, thank you, let me hear from commissioner. Go ahead, is the, is the building permitted?
30-by-60 metal building was built with, unpermitted. He attempted last fall to permit it. He was unable to produce documents. He tried approximately 10 days ago. I sent back a note through the portal, it's the same issue, he's, he's unable to produce a plan that represents what was built out there.
What's the maximum, 1,500 square feet right, right now, the bylaw?
There is no bylaw size for an accessory building. So, there's no zoning issue on that building, there's only a, obviously a building issue, he built it without a permit.
I thought we changed the bylaw, detached garage can only be-
We did, somehow, it was not voted correctly, so it's been removed from the bylaws.
Okay, so basically, that building's not permitted?
Again, it's fine for zoning, but it is not permitted.
For building code?
Building code.
All right, Jimmy, what's, what do you want to say?
So, my, my question of the, the person that was speaking to object, are you on a butter?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and are you on, are you, are you one of, are you on the corner?
I'm not quite on the, the one on the-
I made it so I could hold it up, which one of you?
This is my house, this is Water Department property. Row, you're talking about what was through here.
This is the Water Department?
Water Department, this is where he's driving, he was through-
And your name is what, sir?
Ted Nagel.
Ted, and spell Nagel?
N-A-G-E-L.
This is your home?
This is my home.
Okay, that's, that was my question. And you don't know who owns this one by any chance, do you?
Oh, yeah, I do know, they're moving, I, it's end of the week, I believe.
Okay, that's all, that's all right, that's all right, that's fine, that's all my questions. Thank you.
In your letter, counsel, on February 16, you asked for a, you're seeking a special permit from zoning. How you saying now it's, you shouldn't?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
In, in your letter on February 16, you said we are seeking a special permit from the zoning board.
Yes, I disagreed that it was a variance. And I said, if you want to go the route that it's the home occupation of trade, then it's a special permit, and we would get that. That's what we're trying to seek for you.
So, it's for us, so you want the board to decide it's a special permit or a variance, right?
Yes, and, and just to follow up with some of the things that were said. You see the plan in front of you that he does have the three acres, this was created properly. I think we need to be really careful about limiting the rights of individuals on their sites. You can have chickens, you can have goats, you can have those things. In my opinion, this is a matter that could be handled civilly, and it shouldn't be within the zoning bylaws, like, within the zoning. It shouldn't be that you make the decision if there are neighborly disputes. You could go to the zoning, but the other stuff is irrelevant.
Yeah, but we're not here for a dispute, we're here because a truck parked in the business-
That's what I'm trying to make sure, I'm clarifying what the butter said.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
That you're looking at the zoning, you're trying to make the determination for the use that we have, you know, he went through the steps, not, you know, trying to do anything. He got from the town several, this is the last one, and it's still through December 24. If you want to approve a special permit and put limitations on how many trucks or something like that, I think that could be something to be open to.
I personally believe it's a variance, it's not a special permit to run. Special permit, like I said, a bookkeeper, hairdresser, one seat, I would say a special permit, but not a, not a construction or landscaping business. Let me, thank you, sir, ma'am, you, do you want to say anything?
I do have some.
Try to say as quick as possible, because we have a lot of, we have a lot of hearings and a lot of-
Charlene Nagel, 309 Charge Pond Road.
Yeah.
I'll do a court.
She's got a handout, she was-
Yeah. Okay.
Are you a butter to this property, ma'am?
Yes.
You're a, a butter?
Thank you.
So you- Well, wait till you get in front of the microphone.
Pass your things, go back to your mic.
My, my mistake.
She, she's the wife of the man that just came up.
Thank you.
I don't need one, you can just give it to the commissioner.
No, the one Nagel, that one.
Nagel's there?
Yeah.
And she's what?
Nagel.
She's a Nagel as well?
Yes, yes.
Oh, your husband and wife?
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
All right, ma'am, let's hear it.
Okay, we, we discussed a lot of what Jim was saying before, so I don't want to, you know, go through that again. But you know that Joe made a driveway at the end of his property through the Water Department's land, which is connected to Charge Pond Road. Mr. Nazee, the very last picture is the road, and what Joe did, he removed trees, brought in soil and hard pack. The Water Department sent him a cease and desist to operate a business out of the property. Today, around 3:30-ish, Joe moved three rocks. So, he put one boulder on one side and one boulder on the other side, and then a little rock in the middle. 309 Charge Pond Road is the last house on the right only, and according to Attorney Morton, his business is on a dead-end road, on Charge Pond Road. Now, when Attorney Morton was doing the application, she, she states that Joe, that Joe has a small lands, land landscaping business. In, in our opinion, it is not. He has a landscaping and construction business. He has several dump trucks, multiple trailers, skid steers, amongst other equipment. Attorney Morton makes another statement that many property owners have, have commercial vehicles at their residence. So, what I suggest is Joe should create a list and give to the zoning board. Two wrongs don't, don't make a right. And it is true, our customers, I've never seen customers come to his house, but his employees, I am sure do, do, because Joe can't drive more than one, one vehicle at a time. And I know this is about the building, the zoning, about the business, but over the years, you know, we've heard tailgates of dumb, the dumb, dump truck falling, air, air guns, and so on, and so, so, so forth. We have put up with a lot with him being our neighbor. Mr. Serge has grown over the-
You gotta cut it short, ma'am, we'll have a long night.
Okay.
Cut it short.
Okay, so, Mr. Serge has grown over the years and needs to find a parcel of land or a building to rent versus violating the bylaws. We, we have had enough, Joe Serge has, has no consideration for his neighbors.
All right, very well.
That's all I have to say.
I thank you for your comments. Anyone, anyone else want to speak on this matter? Can you state, you name an address for the record?
Brindex, Brindex, my address, 64 Red Jones Ave. Just very briefly, because they hit a lot of the points. I became aware of this, someone had called me. They were afraid to come forward, and they know that I don't usually back down. So, they asked me to look into it. And I, I will just leave you these packets, you guys can look at them. And they had asked me if I was on the Board of Selectmen back in 2011 when Mr. Serge-
If I may, can I object to this? There's police reports and other evidence I don't think should be admissible within a zoning.
I under, yeah, that's true, so any-
I can, I can pull those out, but they are regarding his landscaping business.
It's not a courthouse, we cannot, we're not gonna-
I can pull those out. Though all this I was going to say is that he has, there are complaints about that, that I also have in here, the Water, the Water Department. If the attorney had spoken about that, it was all on his property. They have told him to remove that driveway, to pull it out, and to give them a plan of revegetating their property that he has disturbed. As of this afternoon, he has not done that with them. I also have that the area that he lives, the eight places, the eight lots, the subdivision, it is, every single deed, every purchase and repurchase of the entire thing has in it that it has the Charge Pond Estates rights reservations and restrictions. That has in it all the things that they cannot do. I can leave it with you guys-
You mean the covenants for the subdivision?
The covenants that all require, that says no noxious or offensive activity, and all of those things that the board can look at. I will be happy to take out the ones regarding that. The Police Department got complaints, went up there-
Okay, you're talking about it, so I appreciate it.
No, I will take them out.
Listen, ma'am, I'm going to make it short for you. The Water Department, this is their problem, they have to go shut them down, not us.
No, I'm just telling you that that is a-
Okay, I understand, and I see the report in 2011 that the Selectmen wanted to find him, and all this, very fine. Also, on, on the covenant, this is the homeowner association that have to bring him up to it. This is not our, our job to impose or to enforce a covenant. This is the homeowner association will impose covenants, not the town. Our concern here tonight, whether we're going to decide it's a variance or a special permit, or if it's, it's not allowed at all.
I think what's in front of us is an appeal of a, of a notice of violation. There's no, there's no application for a variance or a special permit.
So, this is what we're here for.
Okay, so you, so you don't want any of this stuff?
Nah, I don't want to get in trouble.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
I don't want to get, and this is beyond my pay.
No, that's fine, all right, have a good night, thank you.
Thank you. So, we go back to the subject. Anyone else want to speak on this matter? Okay, I hear none. It's, so, the board gonna decide, first of all, if Mr., the commissioner letter stands, and he will be fined every day? And then you have to decide if you're gonna come back for a special permit or a variance, the board will see what, how, how they want it, I think it's a variance.
If I may just ask a procedural question? When we're getting these denial letters and they're saying a specific use, and then three months later, we get another use, what are we, which letter should we go from? three months later we get another use, what are we, which letter should we go from?
Most recent, I would say.
You know, it just creates, it's not fair to the applicant, in my opinion.
I will, I will, I won't follow whatever...
The original.
The commission, no, whatever the commissioner's final thought is.
I just think it's moving the ball, so I understand it, but it's, you know, again, not something that's great.
R-130 is a very sensitive area.
Absolutely.
It's a very sensitive area, you can't, I personally don't think you should be running a business out there, but what do you think on the commissioner, you want to keep, you want to overturn it or uphold it? How you feel about it?
I, I kind of feel like we should be upholding it.
Okay, Veronica, what do you think?
I agree with the commissioner and the letter, I also think that this is a variance, but I don't like to see someone trying to, you know, make their livelihood penalized, I guess, you know, without giving them time to rectify what they're doing.
Well, where we gonna vote tonight if we uphold or overturn the commissioner? It's an advice if it's a variance, this is not, it's an opinion. Okay, so Jimmy?
But my, first of all, what's in front of us is a notice of violation for the use, correct?
The use.
As far as the, the non-permitted building, that's an entirely different violation, an entirely different matter, we're not voting on that.
I just want to clarify what we are here, it is an appeal and a variance, so on the actual application, so my recommendation is if you're leaning towards variance, then you vote that it's a variance, but then allow me to then present...
Argue the variance?
The variance, you know, I'm gonna have to come back.
All right, so if, if, if it's a variance, you want to argue it tonight, you said?
I do not, no, I want to come back. You have a long night and it's not, you know, fair to everyone behind me.
Public notice was simply the appeal, and there was nothing about a request of a variance or a...
Sonja.
Special permit.
But the public...
So I think that we, you know, we'd get tripped up under the proper notice, so I think we're only, I, I, everybody has a different opinion, I think we're voting on the violation on, basically, basically on use. And my opinion, my opinion is, is contrary to what my fellow board members are going to say, but my opinion is that if Mr. Sergi has been issued a business certificate either correctly or incorrectly, and it expires in December, I don't think he's in violation if he's been given, issued a certificate of business at that location. I think that, be it correct or incorrectly awarded, that certificate of business kind of kills the violation.
Maybe the certificate of business just to run the office, not to park 10 trucks.
That's incorrect.
Right?
That's incorrect. Yeah. The, the town clerk doesn't make a zoning determination.
No, she doesn't, but she sends it to you.
Well, they didn't before, that's the problem.
But they would not, the previous town clerk was not sending it down for zoning approval.
So...
So she was issuing them one after another.
This is, isn't the first time that this has happened, that in the past, somebody gives a...
Again, what she, what she issues is not a zoning determination, it's basically to say that at 2 Sarabeth Drive, there is a business operated. Is it legal or illegal that certificate does not say one or the other? It's just for give notification to the public...
Of that's his address.
That that, a business is being run from that address, it's nothing to do with zoning.
And also, Jim, on this, could you just clarify this for me? This says variance and appeal is what's checked off here, so I don't know.
Yeah.
Application.
The top there.
So that's what I do when it's an appeal, but he's seeking a variance.
I'm not, yeah, but before, what I'm, what I'm reading is...
For the publication?
The publication.
But anyway, going back to the subject.
I'm just, that's just, that's just, that's what, what I say, you know.
I have to agree with the commissioner, a lot of people in order to open a bank account, in open, in order to get a loan, they need a business certificate, so they go to the clerk, unfortunately, previous clerk was just handing them like, like nothing, without going to the building department, not to mention prior to the clerk that was there, all business certificate will have to go downstairs, and the plumber, electric, everybody has to visit the site and sign off, and unfortunately, it gets us and a lot, get a lot of people in trouble. But the fact is that he's using that property for business. Richard, what's your thought?
I have a lot, but I'm gonna just hold on to him right at this moment and just go for the, whatever we're voting for.
You, 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 you think it's a variance, correct?
Yes.
All right, Jimmy, you don't, Veronica does?
No, no, I think, I think we're gonna need either a variance or a special permit eventually.
It's a variance.
And, and I feel as though the commissioner is correct that there's a violation.
All right, so here's the answer, it's a variance, and you want to argue it next time?
Absolutely, yep, that's fine.
So what about the appeal? What are we doing with the letter?
But, but the thing...
That's one, that's in one and same thing. It's the same application, right, counselor?
It wasn't publicized as such, it was not publicized as a variance. It was publicized only as an appeal, so that's the only thing we can decide on tonight.
I don't remember, it was so long ago.
Yeah, you want to see it, you want to read it?
Yeah, I know, I know.
I just don't want somebody challenging it down the road.
When did you want to come back for that?
Whatever, it's good for you guys.
Do we need to re-advertise, is my question?
Why don't we re-advertise, bring her back on, in a month? Here, add variance to it, bring her back, but don't charge her for it.
Is there some guidance you can give me as to what you believe the use is?
Use is strictly residential in R-130.
No, I, yeah, I know that, but the, the use that Mr. Sergi's doing...
It's a landscape and business.
Okay, so that's the, what you're determining is, it's not a...
Landscape and, and office, I mean, like he does his books.
Not construction, I don't think it should be the most recent...
Revised letter, I don't understand why we can't use the revised letter.
What's the revised letter say?
Contractors yard.
How's the board feel about contractors yard?
That's the latest letter, so I think that's what we should be going by.
I think the pictures we saw, evidence, a contractors yard.
Richard?
I agree.
All right, contractors yard, that's your answer. When do you want to come back?
26, that's where I'm here anyways.
We got a motion to bring it on the 26?
What are we doing about the violation, the note, the appeal?
We'll continue that.
You want to continue everything?
Can we get a motion, continue this matter to 26?
So moved.
Do we have a deadline, a decision on that?
Not, don't need it.
No, we good?
For a while.
All right, so we have a motion by Jim to continue until the 26, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy, on favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
That's July 26.
June.
June 26.
Aye.
And myself, aye, the 26. 12 dash, yeah, go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. 12 dash 24, design for Forto Road, the sign.
Anything else? Stuff to turn in, stuff to turn in over there. You got anything to put in this folder?
Yeah.
You got anything to put in the folder, Richard?
I already put it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, very well, on this matter, all right, want to guys keep it quiet in the back? Take it outside or whatever. On this matter, Richard, have you reviewed the tape on this matter?
Yes, I have.
And I have myself, so we could sit on the board. Public hearing's still open, I need your name and address for the record.
Hi, Marie Mercia from Sign Design, 170 Liberty Street in Brockton, Mass.
John Shelby, Rojo Car Wash, Forto Road, Wareham.
All right, so would you, I, I read it quick through that thing, I listened quick, so just fill us back in, you trying to put a sign 80 square feet, and you allow 25 over there?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's 82 and a half square feet, and we're looking to put the pylon sign at the entrance exit of Forto Road for Rojo's Car Wash.
Yeah.
Here you go.
All right, Troy, what do you think of this matter?
I don't have a problem with it.
Veronica?
I, I think the sign is big as, I, I thought the sign was actually already in place because I was, I drove by there the other day and I did see, I thought a sign, but...
It's on Cranberry Highway, it's not Forto Road.
It's awfully big sign on that side of the road, what's allowed over there, 25 feet each side? Why on the side road you want such a big sign?
Because we're trying to direct traffic to the lighted intersection, and we're also set back behind the gas station there, so we're trying to get visibility at the intersection so people come in and out through the intersection, because if you drive straight past the gas station, you can't see the building until you're already past the entrance almost, because the number of gas stations blocks it.
Right, but that's how, you bought that lot in the back.
Correct.
You didn't buy it lot on the highway, so you...
No, no, I bought it in the back, correct, but, but the reason, the design actually happened because we designed it and built it based on the, on the bylaw that was posted online at the clerk's office in the town of Wareham, and what, how we got into this is that the bylaw was not updated online, so we, we went there, followed by law, the old bylaw allowed for 100 square feet, so we built it to 80, and we thought it was a by right sign, we went to put up, get our permit, and the commissioner informed us that it was, I needed a, we needed a variance for this because it's not a by right sign, and I presented him and showed the commissioner and the clerk online what it shows, and they realized...
Already built the sign?
Sign Design, yeah, they designed it and fabricated it, sitting in the warehouse, and it was an old, an old plan, then the clerk that following week updated the online version, and then we got stuck with that.
Commissioner, is the old bylaw says 100?
Correct.
All right, Richard, what do you think?
The kind of, between a rock and a hard place, I feel bad that they, they got the bad information, and I also would like to see them be a successful business, and I can see, when I drove down there, I saw that the fact that when you come down certain areas, you just can't see it.
All right, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone against? I, I agree with Richard. I mean, it's...
What was Richard's point?
Richard's point, it was, they read the bylaw, it changed, the manufacturers based on the old bylaw, it changed after, they already made, built it. What do you think, Troy?
Like I said, I mean, I drive by there every day.
It is big, but I understand, I've seen people, I mean, go buy one thing and the new bylaw get printed and they get screwed, so that's not their fault.
And, and to take a little bit of sting off the 82.5 square feet, I took, I deducted the Forto Road section of the sign, I just calculated the car wash, free vacuum, and Rojo sections only, these three sections, comes to 10,656 square inches divided by 144 equals 74 square feet, it's actually less than...
Well, to be honest with you, I was coming here, I was going to deny, but unfortunately, I heard your argument, I believe you entitled of it.
So, I'm...
That being said, do you want to add anything?
I'm of the same opinion.
Okay, let's move to close this matter.
So moved.
Do I have a second on the closing?
Second.
Second by Richard, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rich, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, aye, carries. Any discussion? Can I get a motion?
I'm just going to say one thing, because I, I do feel bad for the situation that you went and built it according to what was online, but on the other hand, now we have to live with it in perpetuity if we approve it.
There's a lot of big signs in town.
I know, we don't need any more.
Same with the big storage building, we have to live...
Oh, okay.
All right, so wishes on that, please.
Move to close the public portion of this hearing.
We did close it.
We did, I'm sorry.
Any motion?
So I make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, we got a motion by Jim to approve as, as presented, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, on in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica?
Deny.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye. 5, 4, 1, 0, it carries, you're good, thank you.
You guys, appreciate the time, the board.
Very welcome.
Thank you.
6 dash 24, special permit for 3to Road. 3to Road, are they here? 3to Road. All right, where were we, where were we at 3to Road? Is it that, the commissioner, is this the old, Mr. Turner, is this 3to Road, is that the old tow truck?
Correct.
4, 0, 1, right?
So applicant's not here.
4, 1, 0. She abstained, right, so, did she abstain? The sign.
Anybody here for 3to Road?
I move that we table it and, and vote on it as the last item in case somebody shows up.
Okay. Very well, pass this, let's table 3to Road.
Just in case somebody shows up.
54 dash 23, La Cerda, 3090 Cranberry Highway.
Is it a new one?
No, it's a continued...
Okay, let's share that.
Hey, don't counsel.
Very good, thank you, Nasi.
Good evening.
Self?
Very well, name and address, please.
You want?
Yeah.
Ready for, sorry, my name is Robert Terry, and I represent the applicant here, this is Mr. La Cerda, he is the applicant.
Okay.
Good, good evening, Brabertol, J.C. Engineering, if you, I may, I have hard copies of plans.
Yeah, please.
Can you send me that back down, please, thank you.
Public hearing's still open, I did go through your plans, there's few, we, we'll hear it from Mr. Cudero, there's, there's few things, apparently, Mr. Cudero has a lot of comment.
That's correct, I just got those comments this morning, so I think you're going to be happy, we'll be fast tonight.
Right.
Brad is in the midst of answering those now.
All right, I want to add, one, one thing I saw on that thing, on that building, what are you doing on the, on the side of the building where the stone is?
If I'm looking at the building, you talking to the left or the right now?
The left and right, it's stone, you're not paving it, what are you doing with that, you keeping it stone?
Well, a, a comment from Mr. Cudero stated that he recommends a snow storage area be provided, I briefly went through the comments I received today from him, and I thought that might be a good location for snow storage in the winter.
Well, I have concern, I would like to see ballards, because this is a Zone 2 area, I have concern when cars parked there for, if there's any leaks, I mean, I would like to see like some ballards in the front so you can park cars in there.
Oh, to prevent parking in that crushed stone area?
Yeah, in case there's leaks, and we'd like to see, make sure the water department's happy with that. And I, I read his report, you got to work on the TSS release, but I will bring Mr. Cudero to hear his comments, and you guys could coordinate, talk to each other, let's see what happened, what he needs done and what you've done.
Oh, I, I completely understand all his comments, I have no issues with addressing them, that's, that's, that's perfectly fine. We were hoping that you would be able to review this plan for layout and make any additional comments if necessary that would need to be addressed for the next hearing.
Mr. Cudero, can you come through?
You stop, but let's see over here, when you see this, this and this.
Okay. All right, did, did you hear from him, did you see all the comments? I know you have problem with TSS lighting, landscape, I mean, landscape and architect and that little driveway on the side.
Yes.
But the only thing, I really insist that we add a barriers, like a ballards or the concrete thing, so he could always dump the snow behind it, you know?
So, Mr. Chair, for the record, Phil Cudero from Allen and Major, the area that you're talking about on the left, the crushed stone, we didn't specifically request that to be snow storage, we asked them to provide documentation, what will they do, and I think they're offering that area up, I think it's fine. I would agree with you to prevent vehicle access back there.
For both sides, the other side 17 feet, he could drive through it.
Well, the, the, on the right side of the building, there's a shared easement to the property to the east a bit, that we asked for some additional information on that as well, so they can't block that, that side off.
Somebody in the back speaking, can you take it outside, please? Okay, so that's the easement for the other building, they're gonna, they'll drive through the parking lot and use it?
So that's the information we asked for is what is the arrangement with that gravel driveway that feeds 3092?
Did you buy this property, sir? Or you leasing it?
Leasing.
You leasing from the person who owns the right side, right?
Yes.
But you got to go back and tell them you can't let them access there because we're going to block it.
Why would you block that?
Because we don't want, we don't want, if you could get me a letter from the water department, they're okay with it, gravel, that cars travel and I'm okay with it. And I'm concerned that you park a car and start leaking and we have a problem with the water departments. And they saying, why did we grant such thing? We, no, and it's a zone two. Unless you pave it and you do proper drainage for it and infiltration and all that. So what's your wishes? You want to?
I'd like to see what they can work out together. We've got a number of easement problems there. You'll see landscaping doesn't come down right to the highway because once again, we've got an on record 30-foot wide easement from the plumbing supply company all the way across to another property on the road that we have no control.
Yeah, this, we understand, this you have no control of. And you don't get cars in the way, so it is what it is.
Well, that's right.
You know what I'm saying?
So is there something? So this, this is the site.
Yeah, the church.
And these guys have, can drive in through their yard to get into?
Yeah, I don't see why they need to, they go through here.
Do they have, do they have no other way to get in their backyard?
What are we talking now, the top easement or the bottom easement, Jim?
Pardon me?
Are we talking now, once again, the top easement?
So on the very, very top page here, if we're standing on Cranberry Highway looking at the building on the right.
You know what I mean?
The N-Star building.
I just want to know which one I was talking about. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. Do they need that? Does the guy next door need it?
I'm going to explore that further. I don't think they do because I think we can give them the right to the easement that's up at the front. And I don't even see any reason for that, you want the truth, because that's not only the winner though.
But she owns both of them. She owns both of them, she don't have to give it. Isn't Mrs. Angus owns them both? Miss Angus or Mrs.?
Yeah.
Yes.
So she don't have to.
Same trust owns them both.
Right, so she don't have to give the easement because the N-Star have plenty access.
Well, I've, no, the only thing I've got to look into on that part of it is amending the contracts on the SCAG side. I mean, we're subject to contracts there. We're not subject easement similar to the easement in the front. This is a matter of record in the registry of deeds. But we're subject to a contract that I will have to get amended. I mean, I don't like that any more than you do.
Is this, oh, that's the transmission place? That's not N-Star, okay.
Yes, that's the transmission place.
She owns that?
Yes.
Yeah.
She owns all three of them. So how are we going to address this matter with the easement?
Well, obviously, for these gentlemen to work together, we're going to have to go to another date anyway. And during that period of time, it'll give me an opportunity to work just to see what I can do about getting rid of it.
If we can't get rid of it, I recommend that we pave it and divert the drainage to be infiltrated with the drainage. You know what I'm saying? And make it safe.
Tell me what you think about that before I pick a date.
Well, that's going to.
We don't have problem with that.
Lucky, Richard, I think.
Well, I guess if I could show that the new impervious area added to this property because it's already exceeding the maximum impervious area.
That's a hardship. I don't, we don't have problem with your variance.
Well, I'm taking out pavement areas to provide landscaping. So if I can do an equal swap and if I take out 2,000 square feet for landscaping, can I put that 2,000 square feet as a single lane driveway so it stays paved? I can look into that option.
We don't want you minimizing the landscape, the landscaping you presented.
I'm not minimizing it, I'm just saying I'm taking out asphalt in the front of the property.
He's trying to keep this pervious instead of impervious.
Mr. La Cerda is telling me that under that gravel there is paved.
Paved.
So I guess we've got to take a look at that. If it is, I think that solves a big problem here, doesn't it?
Well, it's got to be diverted to be infiltrated.
Well, I understand it's still a drainage issue, no, I know that.
I don't think the board for this matter have a problem granting you variance. Wouldn't the board agree?
I don't have a problem.
Just because it's a tough situation for that driveway. We don't have problem giving you, let you pave it. But anything else you're going to be okay to address?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Landscape and architect, all these things. And like I said, we'd like to see ballards here so they don't drive, they could always throw the snow over. Troy, before we go, any comments on that?
No.
Veronica?
None.
Jimmy? Richard?
No, none.
Anyone in the audience for or against this project? On Zoom, I hear none. So let's get this done and next time we wrap it up, hopefully, okay? Let's make sure we talk and wrap it up and decide on that thing. Either you block it, eliminate it or pave it and divert the water. Very well.
Well, we'll figure out if it's paved under there as Mr. La Cerda believes.
And if you need a variance for it, I don't think we have problem with that. When do you like to come back, next meeting?
Here we go.
On the 12th? June 12th, you think you'll be able?
Ready on the 12th?
Preferably June 12th, yes, June 12th, please.
June 12th, okay. We got a motion to continue June 12th.
All's good enough for me.
Moved by Veronica.
Moved by Veronica, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, aye, carries, June 12th. We'll see you June 12th. Let's wrap it up, please, on 12th. Do we need an extension on deadline or we good?
Do we, I gave you an extension last time when Brad wasn't ready.
June 19th.
Still okay? All right, good enough.
All right, let's go to public hearing. Timothy and Lynn DeMarco, 59 Rose Point Road. Seven more hearings, guys.
I don't know if they're going to make it.
Oh, come on.
No, these lights are really bothering them.
I'm being nice, I'm going through them quick.
I know, yeah.
I'm helping you here.
Need some.
I'm being nice.
I need some sunglasses.
No, sir. Oh, you want to leave?
I'm fine.
You sure?
Yeah.
So this is just more comp, tiny, isn't it? More comp, tiny, isn't it?
Yeah.
Sorry, I need to write my note.
Me too.
Until when, when do we do this?
Six, 12th.
12th.
Okay, so you want 1524.
1524, new public hearing.
Okay. We'll just wait till June 12th, we'll be doing the same thing. Well, we might be here till June 12th by the look of the box. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on May 22nd, 2024 at 6:30 PM in room 320. It's actually now room 520 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 15 dash 24 for a variance from the requirements of Article 6. All I did was table 625 under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Timothy J. and Lynn M. DeMarco, care of Brian Grady, GAF Engineering, Inc. of 266 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., proposing to construct a detached garage at the subject dwelling located at 59 Rose Point Avenue, Wareham, Mass., which appears on Wareham SS's map, 78 dash 1, lots 20 and 21 in the R30 zoning district.
Very well, name and addresses, please.
Brian Grady, GAF Engineering.
Timothy DeMarco, 59 Rose Point Ave., West Wareham.
All right, let's hear it.
All right, Mr. DeMarco is here looking for a variance to construct a detached garage in front of the principal dwelling. This is a unique property, has a bit of a history. The original home that was on this property, I think was one of the earlier homes in the Rose Point area constructed in the late 30s. Mr. DeMarco purchased the property in 98. And in 2002, they raised the existing dwelling and reconstructed the house that you see on the site now in the same location as the prior home. So the lots out there, as you know, the Rose Point area, the subdivision goes back to the mid 30s when these lots in this neighborhood was created, predate zoning. So where we're at today is trying, let me just back up a minute. We did get conservation approval for this project last week because we're inland subject coastal storm flowage and we're also within the riverfront area to the Sipacan River. And that's the primary reason where the garage is located where it is. The riverfront area is a wetland resource area under the jurisdiction of Conservation Commission. And when you're in the riverfront area, you have to do an alternatives analysis. So is there an alternative to citing this structure to improve the conditions? So part of that alternatives analysis is Conservation Commission wants you to increase as much as possible the structure setback to the river or get it as far outside the riverfront area as possible. So when the home was reconstructed, it was put in the same area as the prior existing home, which is set quite far back on the lot, obviously, to take advantage of the water view. So if we were to cite the structure behind the existing home or attach it to the existing home, it's not a project that would be approvable by Conservation Commission because of its proximity to the river and its location in the riverfront area. So in order to maximize the setback to the river, get an approvable project at Conservation Commission, the project is located where it is. We have a couple emails from abouters directly across the street in support of the project. I can provide those to you. The neighbors to the left and the right are aware of the project and have no objections. The, if you've seen the pictures in your packet there, there's a six-foot vinyl fence that's running along the left property line directly adjacent to where the garage will be. There's a significant landscape buffer directly off of Rose Point Ave., which will be maintained. The access to the garage will be off the existing driveway. That's our project in a nutshell. And if we could respond, any questions?
All right, very well. Commissioner, the only variance they need because it's in front of the property, right?
Correct.
All right, very well. Board, you understand the matter, the hardship here is that they can't put it in the back because the wetland. So what's your comment, Troy?
I have no comment.
Veronica?
No comment yet, sir.
Jimmy?
No comments.
Richard?
Just, I was just looking online and it said the green card notification. So just wondering if that was all checked off and completed.
I confirmed.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I'm good with it.
All right, well, they thinking, anyone on the public want to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone want to speak against this matter? So let's wait for Veronica, quick. So the only relief being the garage in the front?
Correct.
Right.
I don't see a problem with it.
Before we close, do you want to add anything? No?
Also, are we offering a variance or?
Variance.
Okay.
For putting the thing in the garage in the front. If no comments or no discussion, let's move to close.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, Nazzy, aye. What's the motion wishes on the variance?
A move to approve as requested with standard conditions.
All right, move to approve with the, and to be built according to plan dated 3, March 5th, 2024 by GAF Engineering?
March 1st.
March 1st, okay, March 1st, sorry, 2024. And defining a misstatute requirement of a variance. So the motion by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica? Veronica?
Yes, Jim's distracting me.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, Nazzy, aye, carries, thank you. 1624, Catherine Edwards, 36 Winship Ave., thank you, sir.
Yeah, I actually, I actually think.
Five more.
It's the last one.
The last one is missing. I think I know what you think. I think. Okay.
Five more, five more.
Yeah, I know, I want to, I want to, I want to do this.
That'll be a record. And we signing decisions right now, so it makes everybody's life easy.
Who's the one that's signing going all over the lines? Can you please stay in your lane? Someone takes his first day of crayon day over there. Okay, that's.
Well, I didn't know on the last one, I thought Reggie Jackson signed it as well.
I don't mind sharing a line.
All right.
1624, okay.
All right, leave room for Veronica. She's got her name and her mind, Troy, good lord. There's a pecking order, ain't there? You ought to know, Stewie.
Jimmy, I hear Edwards, right here.
No, I'm doing a different one. I'm putting something away. Doing, it won't work well, will it? There you go. I want to get that one, I want to get that one signed before I read the next one so that I won't be trying to put something away that is two, two decisions back.
So while I was watching that meeting from the 24th, I read that you finally got your glasses updated after six or seven years of having the same ones? It's amazing what you can see when you can see. It's amazing what you can see when you can see.
You know, I can even hear better now.
I believe so.
You know, I always turn the radio down in the truck so I can see better.
It is true. It's too loud, you got to turn it down.
I don't know, so. Okay, 1524. 1524, signed.
He's so organized.
Upside down. Thanks for waiting for us, but if these things get mixed up, it makes it really hard on everybody, so.
We should be supplied with waters.
Pardon me?
Especially when there's a water, like water bottles.
In that room, there's a case.
Cheers, Troy.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on May 22, 2024, at 6:30 PM in Room 320. Again, it's now 520. Room 320. Of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 1624 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 621, and Article 13, Section 1352 and Section 1353, under the Wayham zoning bylaws, to Terry L. and Catherine E. Edwards, care of Brian Grady, GAF Engineering, Inc., 266 Main Street, Wayham, Mass., proposing to raise an old portion of the existing house and rebuild in the same footprint and construct a roof deck at the property located at 36 Windship Avenue, Wayham, Mass. This appears on Assessors Map 22, Lot 1002, in the R30 zoning district.
Name and address, please.
Brian Grady, GAF Engineering.
Terry Edwards, owner of the house.
Thank you. Let's hear it.
We're here applying for a special permit for this property. The portion of the dwelling that's to be raised and reconstructed is the original home on the property, which goes back to approximately 70 years or so. The remainder of the home, there were additions that were added, I believe, in the mid-'90s. So the 70-plus-year-old portion in the front is time to rebuild. So they're going to rebuild it in the same area, going to add a second floor to it. So the second floor increases the nonconformity. As you can see, it's quite close to the property line. We feel that that will not be a detriment to the neighborhood. This is an older neighborhood. Homes out here are approaching 100 years or so. Several of the homes in recent years have been raised and rebuilt. There's a property, just a couple houses down, that's currently on the market for 10 million, if anyone's interested. So it's typical of older neighborhoods. Homes get tear down, rebuilt, raised, added to. So we don't think this is unusual for the neighborhood. This will still be a modest home relative to some of the other homes directly adjacent to us. So the setback to the street is increasing a little bit, about a foot. We're right on the property line as it exists. What they've done is with the new home, they've put a little bit of a two-foot jog in the foundation to give it a little bit of character. The gable lines, adjusting some of that. The roof deck will go on the square box behind the home to be rebuilt. That will remain existing, and they'll just add a roof deck to that, which will be accessible from the second floor of the new structure. And if we could respond, any questions?
All right, the existing nonconformity is the setback?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the only one? If we give you a relief, we could act on it as a special permit? If we feel it's not substantial?
Yes, the existing home predates zoning, and it was constructed right on the property line. It's a 70-year-old home. So we're reconstructing that in the same area and adding a second floor, correct?
Commissioner, do you have a comment on that?
No comment.
All right, Troy, any comment? Want to put the mic next to you, Troy?
Yeah, no, I don't have any comment.
Veronica?
I just have a question.
You have it.
Since you're reconstructing everything, why wouldn't you just move a little bit back?
Because there's a house in the way.
Well, it's a modest home as it is. We've increased the setback a foot or so to the street line. So the addition in the back, that large rectangle addition is a single-story addition. It's basically just an open kitchen, living area. There's no bedroom facilities in there. So this addition is where the bedrooms are, and it's modest in its size.
So it'll shrink it if you do. It makes it smaller?
Yes.
A lot smaller. Okay, Veronica, next question.
I've just not seen how it is laid out on the lot. Am I missing a thing?
Can you give her that? You have one?
She's got one.
All right, look at it while I pass the question. Jimmy, what do you think?
I'm all set.
Richard?
I'm all set.
All right, on the public, anybody want to speak in favor, first of the matter? None? Anyone against this matter? Yes, want to come forward?
The one I'm looking at doesn't have it. They got a different plan that I'm looking at? This one here just shows this.
That's why.
This one?
The architect.
Just want to bring up.
State your name and address, ma'am?
My name is Norma White. I live at 37 Windship Avenue, across the street from the anticipated project. Since 2019, there have been several huge projects that were approved by the interim building commissioner, David Morris, who was actually not certified to be a building commissioner. No neighbor because those permits were pulled.
Well, on this matter, what do you have to say on this matter?
On this matter? No neighbor notice were pulled on... Oops, wrong one. This substantially changes, in my opinion, the low-profile character of the neighborhood and impacting the abutting properties. Thus, I have an acute interest in being aware and advocating. I feel, in my opinion, that there is a determination that it is detrimental as listed in Article 13, Section 1358. I agree with and support Mr. Turner's determination that it is not an upfront setback. Article 6, Table 621.
Yep.
And I also agree with Article 13 zoning protection because of the increased building height.
Okay, the building height is above 35 feet? Well, it's not increasing above what's allowed, but...
It's a one-story, and it's going to a two-story with a roof deck.
But it's still under 35. But isn't that both houses? He's in the middle between two monster houses? I mean, how is that detrimental to the neighborhood if he puts in, erases his house and puts a rebuild there? I mean, he's got two monster houses next to him. He's like small compared to them. How is it substantially detrimental to the neighborhood? How do you explain it? How do you see it substantially detrimental?
Just additional considerations may include impacts to abutting properties.
Okay.
Mr. Edwards and Ms. White have had a conversation. She has expressed concern that she's directly across the street, has somewhat of a view of the water, so she's concerned regarding that.
It's my neighborhood, and I am concerned about it.
Yes.
Anything else, ma'am, you want to add? You want to add anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your determination on the project.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else want to speak against this matter? I hear none. Back to you, Veronica, what do you think?
I don't know, I haven't seen the neighborhood. I know when there is an existing building that is, you know, goes against code and then it gets rebuilt. My thought is try and bring it back to code, you know? Once this is built, it's going to stay on the lot line. I mean, it's on the lot line, so.
Yeah, bring it back to code, that's 20 feet. The whole thing is 20 feet wide.
Well, give something, I guess. It's on the lot line.
But it is existing nonconforming.
Well, front setback is 60 feet in this zone.
Oh, 60? Okay, 60 feet, we go back to the water. Take the whole house out.
Who's the abutter here to that property? What is, is that like, what's the space there?
To...
Well, it's on the property line. Who owns the property beside it?
It's a road.
It's a street.
Oh, it's a road?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the street line.
That's Windship Avenue.
So if we want to go back 60 feet from there, add your numbers.
Oh, this is the buffer?
Yeah, that's the street line, and the edge of the road's about 16 feet from the property line.
Okay, okay. That shows a little better thing.
Okay.
Looks a little better. When I see that there's some distance from...
Anyone else on the board want to comment? Richard?
No, I'm going to destroy you.
I'm good.
Jimmy?
So the house is there, it's existing. You haven't torn it down yet. Oh, yeah, no. It's still there. My only question.
Anything before we close?
Nothing to add.
No?
Move to close the public portion of this hearing.
I have a motion to close that, second.
Second?
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye. It's closed. Now, what's your wishes? You want to act on it as a special permit or a variance?
Well...
I would say let's act on it as a special permit because it's an existing nonconformity. Right?
I agree.
All right, so...
Make a motion to act on it as a special permit.
All right, I have a motion by Veronica, do I have a second?
Second?
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Are we too last?
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Okay, then, aye.
Aye, 500, it's a special permit. Any discussion on a special permit? I hear none, any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, as presented, and the finding not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and to be built according to plan dated... What's the plan dated in there, please? Anybody has plan, GAF?
They have a dated plan, don't you?
Well, Jim took it from us very fast.
Well, he took it from them.
Dated December 5, 23.
December 5, 2023, by GAF Engineering, to be built according to these plans, and the findings not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Who made that motion?
Veronica.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Rich. All in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica? Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it carries, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, sir, yours, sir. 1724, anti for a special permit or a variance on Arbiters Ave.
Now that's, yeah.
Four more. Come on, want to be out of here, 11.
I thought it was something else. Thought it was part of the packet. Thought it was like plans or something.
Are you here all night, Brian?
Not as long as you.
Oh, you can stay. You can stay.
Oh, thank you for the invite.
Nazee, on the last one? And Richard? What is this?
Isn't it 1724?
Making your life easy.
Right, 1724.
No, making your...
That's what we're on next.
Don't have to come in.
Yeah.
All right, the one that we're signing is...
Oh, sorry, 1624.
I just want to get that signature in here before we...
Yeah, I'm just looking at where it's at, this.
He's just going to throw them away.
Thank you.
Trying to clean up our act.
Not yet, that's my last thing. Went to Conservation first.
When we were talking with the guy over there, wanted the elderly home over there.
Remember him? What was his name? I forget.
I saw his name.
White, Bob White. The keeper, the maintenance guy?
He kept coming down from Boston. What the heck was his name? He was in here, we were in here until 10:30 at night with that guy. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on May 22, 2024, at 6:30 PM in Room 320 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 17-24 for a special permit and/or variance from the requirements of Article 13, Section 1355 and Section 1356, under the Wayham zoning bylaws, to Anthony Frangitis Frangvatus of 16 Barrett Way, Wayham, Mass., proposing to raise and reconstruct existing dwelling at the property located at 2 Arbuthers Ave., Wayham, Mass. This appears on Assessors Map 11, Lot K20, in the R30 zoning district.
All right, very well, name and addresses, please.
Anthony Frangvatus, 16 Barrett Way.
Brian Grady, GAF Engineering.
All right, where are we going?
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we're here to seek a special permit to raise and reconstruct an existing, single-family dwelling located at 2 Arbuthers Ave. It's a pre-existing, nonconforming structure as well as a pre-existing, nonconforming lot. The existing lot size is 5,000 square feet, and the dwelling's 30 by 30, 30 by 299. The plan is to reconstruct the same-size footprint and move it slightly to the north, improving the nonconforming setbacks. And I can walk you through it on the site plan. The driveway access is off of Barrett Way.
Have you built in the back the same foundation?
There is no foundation. It's up on tree logs. It's a cut, it's a...
And she's moving it back, she's improving the... She's lessening the... She's making the setback better, correct?
Yes, I'm moving it to the north.
Okay, we got kind of similar situation described by the commissioner. If we feel it's not so much detrimental, we could act on it as a special permit. Start by Troy, what do you think?
I don't think it's detrimental.
All right, Veronica, what do you think?
I'm fine with it.
Jimmy?
As long as there's not a neighbor coming in with some compelling information, I'm fine.
Richard?
Yeah, I like the way that they're lessening the nonconformity, so.
Okay, anyone on the public want to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone against? In favor? All right, let's hear it.
Hi, Jane Gleason. I'm an abutter.
Okay.
And I would like to speak in favor of the project. I think that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. I think that it, the scale, the mass, the volume, all that are appropriate, and improving the nonconformity is to the betterment of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Gleason. All right, anyone else? Anyone want to speak against this matter? I hear none. Anyone say anything before we close, anti? Anything?
Not at this time.
Brian?
Nothing to add.
All right, can we get a motion to close?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second?
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Myself, aye, close. Okay, on 1355, it's a special permit, 1356, if we feel it's so detrimental, we go a variance. You guys feel it's a special permit or a variance?
Make a motion that we grant as a special permit.
All right, motion to grant as a special permit.
Second.
Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
This is for a special permit?
Yeah.
Yeah, aye.
And myself, special permit. Any discussion now? Hear none, what's the, what's the wishes on the special permit?
Grant as proposed.
Grant as proposed.
I'll second.
Seconded by Veronica.
Seconded by Veronica and to be built according to plan drafted by GAF Engineering dated. Where you got, Brian?
It is March nineteen twenty-four.
March nineteen twenty-four and the findings not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. And that is the motion by Jim seconded and by Veronica, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, aye. It's gone. Eight, thank you.
Thank you.
Eighteen twenty-four. Paul and Elaine Coughlin. A special permit or variance on Cleveland Way.
Thank you. No, she thought you were handing, you were handing him plans.
I'm sorry, I thought you were giving out plans, I wasn't paying attention.
Richard?
Aye.
You guys are doing a year's worth of work in one meeting.
Pretty close.
Pretty close, huh?
Haven't been out this late in a long time.
Well, I haven't seen any pumpkins outside yet and there's no mice running around, so. Coughlin. Coughlin. The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty PM in room three twenty of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wayham, Mass., zero two five seven one, to consider petition number eighteen dash twenty-four for a special permit and/or a variance from the requirements of Article six, Table six twenty-eight and Article thirteen, Section thirteen fifty-two and Section thirteen fifty-three, under the Wayham zoning bylaws to Paul and Elaine Coughlin, trustees, care of Anthony Frang, sorry, I'm sorry, I ruined your name. Why can't you have an easy one like mine?
Like Akobachi?
Trustees of the Anthony Frangatus of twenty-two Williams Street, New Bedford, Mass., proposing to connect the existing dwelling to the existing garage at the property located at twenty-five Cleveland Way, Wayham, Mass., Assessor's Map seven B dot two, lot twenty, in the R thirty zoning district.
Brian Grady, GAF Engineering.
Anthony Frangvietus on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Coughlin.
Frangvietus, it's not so terrible.
All right, let's hear it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we're seeking a special permit for the property located at twenty-five Cleveland Way. This is in the Indian Mound Beach area of town. There is an existing garage and existing dwelling on the house and we are seeking to connect them via a breeze, an enclosed breezeway and exposed deck as well as squaring off the front of the house to enlarge the kitchen. So, the extension, the squaring off the house and the breezeway is an extension of a non-conforming setback. So, this lot is a pre-existing non-conforming lot as well as a pre-existing non-conforming setback.
All right. Okay, again, similar situation. Could be a special permit or a variance. We'll start by Troy, what do you think of the project?
I, I don't, I don't have any issue with the project.
Anthony, do you have architecture plans on that?
Yes, they should be in your packet and I also have enlarged.
Folded in there, they, maybe not.
Oh, right here.
Got it?
The breezeway is demarcated by, the new construction walls are shaded, so the entry and the half-bath is the breezeway. The shaded walls represent the new construction. The existing garage and the existing house are being connected with the entry and half-bath and we are adding to the existing house four feet. That's to the north as well as the deck. This is the area that's being squared off to enlarge the kitchen.
Yep.
And that's shaded on the site plans.
Okay, very well. Back to you, Troy, what do you think?
I, I don't have a problem with it.
Veronica?
I don't have a problem, looks good.
Jimmy?
I'm good.
Richard?
Good.
Anyone on the audience, on the public, want to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone against? Commissioner, anything?
No comment.
No comment, all right, very well. Before we close, any, any closure, Anthony? Anything before?
No.
We move to close this matter?
So moved.
Okay, I have motion to close by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazia, aye, it's closed. Now, do you wanna, do you feel it's so substantially detrimental or not? If not, we could go as a special permit. What's your wishes?
I'll make a motion that this is a special permit, it's not detrimental to the neighborhood.
All right, very well, we have a motion, any discussion on the motion? I hear none, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It's a special permit, what's the wishes on special permit?
Grant as presented and I don't have the date on the plan.
It is November ten, two thousand twenty-three by GAF Engineering. Okay, so who made the motion?
Second.
Second by Veronica and the findings not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood and standard condition. Second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazia, excuse me, Nazia, aye, it carries, thank you. Next one. Nineteen dash twenty-four, RJ Modo, site plan review on twenty-one Old Glen Charlie Road. Sorry, Jimmy?
That's all right, he's gotta send his back too, so.
Check the green card.
The signature on the card. And these are the cards for this one?
It's all set, I had already, yeah, I had already did it by email.
Put these in the back.
She had already scanned it into me, she was just giving me the person. I always require a report, hang on.
And nineteen twenty-four. Somebody did a great job of having everything organized in that order here for us. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, at six thirty PM in room three twenty of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wayham, Mass., zero two five seven one, to consider petition number nineteen twenty-four for a special permit and/or variance from the principal use requirements of Article three, Table three twenty, and the principal residential building per lot requirements of Article six under the Wayham zoning bylaws to RJ Modo Inc., care of Robert L. Perry of one ninety-one Main Street, Wayham, Mass., seeking to construct a three-bedroom duplex at the property located at twenty-one Old Glen Charlie Road, Wayham, Mass., zero two five three eight. This appears on Assessor's Map one twenty-nine, lot one one oh one slash C one in the Commercial Strip Zoning District.
Good evening again, folks, my name is Robert Perry and I represent the applicant. I'm accompanied by Russell Modo, who is the principal of the applicant.
Mm-hmm. What about the big plan, can you look at that one? All right, go ahead, Congressman.
This is kind of an unusual, unusual first for me. This is relief that was sought and granted by this board two years ago.
Okay.
For whatever reason, Mr. Modo, on behalf of this corporation, did not apply for his building permit and break ground timely. There are basically no changes in the plans that I have represented you from the plans you approved two years ago. The only minor difference is the location of the foundations for the duplex. And it's no bigger, it's the same thing basically, but it's just, it's a little different building. He found out that his variance had expired when he applied for his building, Mr. Chairman, right, so he said, you know, I can't give it to you, your special permit's still good, but your building permit, your application for variance, your approval is now gone by under the statute, it was too late for me to come and say, can you give me an extension? And it probably wouldn't have done me any good anyway because if I could have made it, I wouldn't have been here until a day or two after the special permit would have expired. So, we were between a rock and a hard place and just filed the entire petition again. Everything is identical to two years ago. A variance is required because the lot is just a very small amount under what would be required for a total of two duplexes on it. It's a strange-shaped lot, it's the strangest-shaped lot in the entire zoning district, from what I can see. If it were a rectangular lot like the rest of them, it would be starting anywhere in the lot, you'd have more than enough area to put in excess of two duplexes on it. So, I think that's what creates the hardship, just as you agreed two years ago that it did. I'm asking you to re-estate the variance, there's no difference in the neighborhood, the neighborhood is the same, there'll be no substantial detriment to the neighborhood if you reissue the special permit. I'm asking you to do that so that we can, he's all set to get the building permit and break ground and get to work on the project immediately.
I would rather re-grant the old permit because we had discussed it in, like, numerous hearings for us to re.
What's different?
What, what changed in the plans? Did you change anything?
No, there's no change in the plans, but I'm not under a two-year rule or anything, yeah. You, you granted this relief, it's just.
Right, but I wanted maybe give an extension to the old permit, I don't want to go through these plans again, we went through these plans thoroughly before. But I wonder if we can that that is expired, I don't think we can.
Well, I don't think you can either, Nazia, I honestly don't, I would have done that if I thought you could, it'd be a lot easier than what I've gone through here.
Moving it on the site, did you move, shifted the foundation a little?
A little bit, it's not moved, it's in the same basic place, septic systems in the same basic place. He's just building, well, effectively, two raised ranches connected. And that meant the foundation is a little bit different than it was originally, but basically the same size, it don't change.
It's not moved?
No, no.
Do you have a architecture plan for this?
It's wider, but it's in the same spot. It's a little bit wider because it's a thirty-four, thirty-four on the two raised ranches, it was a twenty-six, twenty-six on each before, but those were taller, they had more square footage. This is a little bit smaller project, but the way the raised ranch is, is made, it's just wider by about eight feet.
Do you have architectural plans on that?
I don't.
So, if I remember correctly, originally, you have a two-family and you wanted to add four more, two twos.
That's correct, that's how it came in, that was why you had so many hearings, I believe.
You're sticking to the one, or two units, one building?
Yes.
One structure. And so, you're putting back two units, one structure, you're just changing it, you're making it more square instead of more rectangular, is that about correct?
I'm just building a little bit smaller structure that financially, the raised ranch is, yeah, less square feet. Those were thirteen fifty-two each, these will be eight eighty-four each with an option for a third bedroom in the basement.
Because of the way that.
Because they have raised ranches, they're a little bit less costly to build and that's really the reason that I'm doing it this way.
Do you have the old plan? That the plan, that the, that the site plan had changed at all with the drainage, all these things?
That's all the same, that's all identical to the new plan, I think I might have the old plan here, Nazia.
Can I look at it?
I think I might, but the only change was the actual foundations for the two buildings. I don't, I got the drainage calculations, I got, I think, everything else. Yes, I don't, but I tell you, there's no change in anything on that plan other than the foundations themselves to accommodate the two raised ranches hooked together.
You don't have the plan?
No, I thought I did, but I, I.
Well, if, if the board choose to approve it, we will condition it that it's same site plan applied, presented before.
I didn't apply for the site plan, I assumed it did.
All right.
Okay? You granted some kind of a site plan.
Because we went, like I said, back and forth, like, three hearings to grant that, to grant that site plan, I don't want to, I don't want to delay the gentleman.
We agreed the site plan is still in effect, it's still good, we have to honor that and that is, that's the.
Site plan came in under a special and what we're doing is under a variance and the variance expired.
And a special permit, because we need the special permit under the bylaw to do a, it's like a duplex.
Why we looking at this, Troy, what do you think?
I, I don't have any issues.
Veronica?
I remember it, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Jimmy?
I'm okay.
Richard, what she's looking?
I was just trying to bring up the old plans from the closed projects.
And now, and the, on the public, anyone want to speak in favor of this matter or against? In favor, come forward, please. Ma'am, in favor, you in favor or against? Okay, anyone in favor? None, against, 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 come forward.
Rick, did you see the site plan from twenty twenty-two in the packet?
You want to come forward, who wants to speak?
Did you see the site plan from twenty twenty-two in the packet?
If you don't want to speak, that's fine, you could say I'm against, that's fine. Have a seat, state your name and address and tell us where you're against from.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Schubert, I live at twenty-three Old Glen Charlie Road. So I'm.
Make sure you speak to the microphone, we can't hear you.
So nervous.
Don't be nervous.
Okay.
So I live, my house is abutted to the.
You state your name first and your address.
Yep, Cheryl Schubert, twenty-three Old Glen Charlie Road.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, okay.
It's okay. My house is abutted to the lot that they want to put these plans in. So I'm just a little confused myself, first of all, because they've changed the plans, they said that they gave you the same plans, it originally was two, two-family houses, now he's saying something different.
No, it's, counsel, please talk to us when you do. It is the same, it's a smaller, the building is smaller, but it's the same pretty much site plan and the same number of units, it's just slightly smaller house.
She thinks they're getting four units.
Right, and they're not getting four units, they're only getting two like they did before.
Okay, so I have to, which was it, now that it's been two years that he has had the time to fix the issues that had come up with filling in of the wetlands, the junk and garbage in the backyard, fixing the driveway so it doesn't run into the street so that we can't get through if it rains. And that's a concern of mine that if those things weren't taken care of within two years, this whole neighborhood's going to be worse, it's going to be.
Well, that's why he's here again, apparently financially he couldn't do it or something happened with the gentleman and he's here reapplying. It doesn't mean we have to say yes, we understand what you're saying, but I'm sure he had some hardship, why did, he didn't go forward with that?
But, oh yeah, no, I'm not saying about that, I'm saying that none of the things have gotten better.
Well, if we, if we grant him this time, it won't be in next, if, if the board decide to give him this permit, I guarantee you, if he doesn't do it within the year or two, whatever the.
He won't get it again.
Whatever the deadline is, he won't get it again.
Okay, and then there's the issue of it's, it is, if you've been down Glen Charlie Road, it's a very old Glen Charlie Road, it's a very narrow road.
Yeah.
And now these new cars coming in, there's not really place to park, and emergency vehicles getting down the road is a concern that I have, because I'm at the end of the street.
If I remember, was there, wasn't there talk about stuff that was on the property and that that was going to be cleaned up and straightened up? I mean, I guess.
It was part of the project, but it never happened.
But it never, but the project didn't go forward, so he's not, wasn't beholden to what we had.
Still has to do that if we grant him a new permit.
If you fill in the wetlands, isn't that like a whole other issue in itself that, which we remedy?
Well, we don't deal with the wetlands, that would be conservation.
That would be remedied before you can move forward a building?
If you're talking. Unnecessarily, sir, I'm the conservation administrator for the town, well, previous conservation administrator. I can't say that I am fully aware of this, I haven't had a look into it at all, it was a violation before I started working for the town. But he would have an order, if it was a violation that went in front of the commission, normally would go to a notice of intent, there'd be an order of conditions that'd make him replicate the well-in that he failed. I don't know if that's what happened, but there is a process for that.
So wouldn't that have to be fixed before?
Not necessarily.
I don't think I have any other questions.
Do you have any more questions?
I don't think so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to come back up with my wife, I was just sitting next to her so she had.
That's good, good support, all right?
Thank you.
Nazia, just so you know, this is the old site plan from.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
Does the applicant have a response, though, to that, the questions about the wetlands and, and what's going on with the property?
Josh, did he ever go to conservation before you?
It was before I started working here, I'm nervous.
Well, he's going to have to do it, what's a, what's a limitation on?
The order of conditions is valid for three years, if that's what the commission made him do.
I don't think there are any issues at all, I mean, they signed off on the building permit.
Okay, you are, you have the hundred four, you don't have a.
I don't think he's building within the wetland.
No, I, I don't think he's, he's got sign off, he submitted the application after everybody signed off.
He might need the RDA because he's got a stamp on the hundred four. Come forward, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, it's possible, yeah.
He might need an RDA, because you have a little section in the hundred four, so you might need. Probably not a notice of intent, but you still need the RDA. That's something with conservation, nothing has to do with that.
I think he's all set on whatever he does need, because they wouldn't have signed up.
All right, your name, ma'am?
My name is Shannon Crean, I live at twenty-four Old Glen Charlie Road, directly across the street from the proposed project.
Okay, what's your concern?
I have a lot of concerns. First of all, I have videotaped footage of him filling in the wetlands, we have truck after truck after truck bringing in debris, rocks, stumps, fill, filling in the wetlands about two to three years ago when this project first started. Additionally, Mr. Moda has been storing random things in the back of his house, like boats and other things, and he has been.
Other things?
Excavator.
Excavators, bobcats, things like that are being stored back there. He currently has a two-bedroom, I mean, sorry, a two-family home that he is renting out to three separate families, there is an illegal apartment in the basement that he has been running out of there. He has not done any maintenance to the home in the past three years. We have put a substantial amount of money into our front yard trying to prevent the runoff because he sits up high on a hill, he has not maintained the driveway, he has not maintained the landscape, we've had retaining walls built that have been washed out, that we have spent substantial, tens of thousands of dollars to repair and rebuild because of the washout when it rains out. We have gone so far as to try to put rubber roofing along our fencing. We have gone so far as to try to put rubber roofing along our fencing to try to deter the water from coming in. We have not been able to maintain any landscape in our yard due to the fact that the disrepair of his yard. The tenants that he does have, one of them is very nice and quiet, but the other one, she's speed racer. She drives down the road going 50 miles an hour, bringing her kids to the bus stop. We live in a, in a family neighborhood. Not only is Cheryl our neighbor, but Mary Barnes, you can see behind us. She's 89 years old. She bought her house in 1957. She's lived there for almost 70 years. We purchased her niece's house upon her husband's passing. This is a very close-knit family neighborhood. We have neighbors, Liz and Chance Rue, who would have come here tonight, but they did not get notified because they're renters. These people are homesteaders. They have three children. The people across the street from them have two children. The people next door to them have children. This is a family neighborhood and also we do have several elderly. There's also a gentleman in our neighborhood, Nate, who is 60 years old, who was born and raised in that house. Everybody in the neighborhood is completely against bringing in additional road traffic. The road is very small. It's not well-maintained. We did have a conversation with the town on several occasions this year to try to clean out the drainage gutters, but they weren't able to find them. They came down on several locations because the drainage basins are so overwhelmed with dirt and debris from Mr. Mata's yard that the town wasn't even able to find them. We had to pay at our own expense landscapers to come in and clean out his catch basins because they were not well-maintained. I have, I have video proof of the damage to my yard from Mr. Mata refusing to maintain his property, which has cost us significant harm. And the thought of him putting in additional housing is, it's a little terrifying to me. We have found dead animals in our yard. We had a coyote corpse that was found in our yard because it was displaced from all of the wetlands being filled up back there. I just feel like he's an irresponsible homeowner. He's not taking care of the home that he has there because he's not present. He's not on site. He lives off-site, so he doesn't care about the neighborhood. Those of us that are here today and are present have been here for years. We're invested. We have children here. You know, Ms. Barnes has been here for almost 70 years. This is detrimental to the entire neighborhood so he can turn a profit, making extra money off of a duplex, which originally was supposed to be two duplexes. And he scaled it down a little bit, but he's not a responsible homeowner.
All right, that's a lot of information to digest. The only thing, I think we could do for you would pay, we'll continue this public hearing, pay site visits. The conservation commissioner is here. He will, he already here. If he's burying wetland or like you said, he'll visit. I'm sure now he knows he'll visit and decide on that. If you're saying there's a third unit, commissioner is here hearing this, he'll make a visit or determine if there's a legal three-unit there. And I guess we'll, we'll have to continue the matter and I wish all of us should go visit. Now, you live with the house with the shed on the property line, right? Next to him?
No.
No, that's our neighbor Cheryl.
That's Cheryl.
We're directly across the street. I'm Russell Krian.
And across the street, what catch basin you clean for him, you're saying?
There's two in this street. They're.
But that's not his, that's the town.
I have videos.
Yeah, but that's the town, not his.
Well, we've called the town on that. That's another story, of course.
That's the town, not his.
But it's all the wash off that comes off the driveway.
And the town went down.
Why, he's higher than you?
Yeah.
Yes, much higher than us. And in fact, the illegal apartment renter in the basement of his duplex currently is Ms. Barnes nephew. So.
This is a court violation. This is, we can't comment until we hear from our commissioner. So we really, I mean, we will investigate that. We'll have the commissioner look at it.
During the last, the last time, two years ago, I remember we did it Zoom and it was brought up that there was not enough room on the lot to build the two dwellings that he was looking for. And it came down to you guys trying to calculate if he had enough room to do one dwelling or two, and you couldn't come up with the commercial-sized square footage of a lot. And it went back and forth on that.
The way it's presented to us on special permit, I forget, what was the variance for?
This was area, Naz, it was for area.
Floor area affair?
No, area of the lot in order to put two complete duplexes on.
How big is the lot there?
1.87 acres.
Oh, was this the one with the asterisk?
You go up, it's up on the hill.
No, was this, was this about the interpretation of?
That's correct. Because the way, the way the bylaw was written.
Right.
They were, it was, there was a very loose interpretation that only 2,000 square feet were necessary.
Yeah, he needs a variance for the third unit.
Yep.
For each.
For the third.
And the whole, that whole area, that's not all buildable. There's a gully back that you get lost in.
Which is, which is watershed.
I recall it, but this.
I'm talking zoning. If they're gray, all these things, conservation doesn't concern us. We're talking about zoning.
We're talking about character of the man. You guys told him he didn't have enough acreage, so he started filling it.
We are discussing this, ma'am. You see, you got to understand, the zoning board of appeal acts on the property, not on the character of a person. So we act on the property, understand? If the guy, nice guy, good. If it's a bad guy, this is not our problem.
But when he was told he didn't have enough acreage and he started backfilling the wetlands.
He needs one variance, ma'am. He needs, he's allowed three units. So he needs a variance for the fourth one. That's why we granted him a variance before. And we'll see what happened with the board. And we can discuss it right now. It's definitely going to take a site visit personally. I'd like to have a site visit, but discussing this, this fourth unit. What's a frontage? He has over 200.
250 something.
I think he had plenty of frontage.
It's like 270 something.
Yeah, she was way over on frontage. He was trying to swallow it on.
Troy, what do you think again?
Well, I'm just trying to think back to the original, what we went through. And I remember a lot of it. And a lot of the questions that they had were going to be addressed with the site plan review that went through.
And I think they were. And I think if these.
The runoff and all that, I think that was.
He had to hear that site plan review.
Well, councillor, can you let, let him speak? You'll have your chance.
So I remember, you know, going through all that and us finally coming to the determination that he was, he could do it by writing, is what I think came out.
I know. Let me, I think the bylaw had changed. It doesn't need 30,000 each unit. It's 20,000 after the duplex. But my computers keep dying. Somebody have a bylaw?
Here.
I don't remember what we.
Cut off the press.
Determined in terms of landscaping to prevent the runoff that's happening.
There was a lot.
There was a lot of site plan done.
There was, there was a, there was a complete site plan. I believe at the time, the determination was that, and he can't do the work now because it's expired, so that's why.
All right, it is 20,000. So you're in strip commercial, right?
Yes.
And you are 1.87 acre?
Yes.
So the actual, what we approved would actually improve the property and reduce the problem.
You're short 3,500 square feet still. It changed to 20,000 instead of 30. So you're going to need 3,500 square feet for the fourth unit, the variance. That's what the variance for. Because the first two units in strip commercial needs 45,000 square feet. Each additional one, it's 20,000. He has 36,000. So he get one and one for variance if the board wishes to so, to do so.
I don't think, I don't know. Getting late to think about that calculation.
I know, that's how it is.
I think he needs like 70,000 total and he's got 60 or something like that. It's like you said, it's 3,500.
Hold on, right?
It's a small amount.
It's a small amount. It's a small amount. That's correct. And of course, an awful lot of these, and I wasn't here, so I'm really.
I know, okay.
Talk about what I've been told, but apparently Brad brought him in here to begin with.
Right.
Looking to build two more duplexes.
Right.
Why? I don't know because it was an absolute no-no. I can't imagine you giving him permission to go to that extent. And you didn't. You raised the issues. You went back and forth. You completed the site plan review. And once again, whatever you did in that respect is still in effect, still reflected on the plans, and he's still required to adhere to it. So, but I do have one.
But that being four units now, two, four, six, eight. No, you don't need site plan.
Two, four?
Eight cars. You don't need site plan review. All right, Veronica.
I have no comment.
You want to next site visit?
I, yes.
All right, Jimmy.
You're looking for comments? I think it's time for us to continue this because we have two, two members that want to go there, so.
Can we ask if there's any other members here to speak against this? Because there may be other people here.
What's that?
I think.
She feels as though there's other people that want to speak.
Yeah, we'll get to that. We'll discuss and we'll get to this. Thank you. And Richard, what do you think?
I'm good right now.
All right. Anyone else want to speak against this matter?
Somebody online?
All right, let's hear that.
Someone online, go ahead.
Hey, I think maybe you can hear me.
All right, Danielle.
Yes, this is Dan LaGeraldi. I live at 17 Old Glenn Charlie with my wife. We bought the property. In terms of impact to the neighborhood, I would agree with what the other people have said. In addition, I, I believe that this would impact our property value. We look, we used to look out to what was sort of a nice wooded area. Now there's a flat deck and soon there'll be a duplex with a bunch of cars and people moving around and, you know, it's, it's, it's not what we thought would evolve after, you know, when we bought the property. And I think we'll, it'll impact our property value. And I'll wait, make one other comment because I don't know how this, this factors into anything, but it wasn't until recently when the property line was staked out after the fill, filling was done to make a flat deck for these properties, that I realized a substantial portion of that fill is on our property. And, yeah, I just sort of recently found that out by going out there and seeing those stakes. I don't know if that's either here or there or something to be dealt with in some other way, but I feel it's problematic and speaks to some extent of the, let's just say, poor communication between neighbors for someone to dump a bunch of trees and dirt and boulders and whatnot onto somebody else's property.
All right.
So if you couldn't infer, I'm, I'm not in support of this project.
All right, thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Will you be okay continuing for June 12? We make a site visit. Conservation, we check on it. Commissioner, we check on it. Can we get a motion? Continue?
So moved. Second.
Second by Rich till June 12. All in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Aye.
And myself, aye. We will pay a site visit. We'll check it out when you guys can, you have a chance, everybody go by. And Josh, if you could check that wetland issue, although it's not our business, but might as well you hit.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, thank you. 22-24, five-star golf cart for special permit or a variance for 161 and 167 Marion Road.
Site plan review.
Yeah.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on May 22, 2024 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 22-24 for a special permit, site plan review, and use variance from the principal use requirements of Article 3, Table 320, and Article 15, Section 1520, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Five Star Golf Cars and Utility Vehicles LLC, care of Scott Rubin Esquire of 71 Legion Parkway, Brockton, Mass., proposing to reuse the existing facility to house its operation as a golf cart repair and sales facility at the property located at 161 and 167 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. This appears on a Wareham, on assessors map, 60, lot 1020 and lot 1022 in the MR30 zoning district.
Very well, councillor.
Thank you. Scott Rubin, 71 Legion Parkway, third floor, Brockton, Mass. I have Scott Barry here from J.K. Homegren Engineering as well, and Dave Hodgson. Want to give an address, Dave?
Seven Appleton Way, Medway, Massachusetts.
Okay, very well.
He's on behalf of the applicant. We also have Spenceley Family, which is here in the, in the audience as well. They are the current owners, historic owners of this property, have used that property as a Chevrolet dealership going back to the 1980s. And they're still the owners of the, of the property to this date here, obviously in support of the, of the petition. Again, as, as was just read off, we're here for a use variance. We spent a little bit of time working with the commissioner. This property is really going back to the 1980s, has been historically a commercial property. Again, it's had various uses there. Car dealership for extended period of time into the late 1990s, and then it's switched over to various auto repair shops, marine repair shops, and as well as a tow yard at some point. And most recently, I actually think Mr. Sergi, who was here earlier, was the last tenant, was not Mr. Sergi. Oh, sorry. It was not Mr. Sergi. Was last, the last tenant was more of a landscape-type use, some heavy equipment there, was, was, was the last present use, which was, has been closed for about six or, six or seven seven months now. Again, so my client is in the business of selling gas and electric golf carts to campgrounds, golf carts, golf courses, and consumer use as well. They're also interested in selling, they have a license with a dealer to sell street, street-ready vehicles as well, and that's their business model. They're presently in Buzzards Bay, they're losing their lease and are in need of a location. So they've executed a purchase and sale agreement. Their plan here is to do really no work on site. They have no interest in doing any work to the site itself. At the request of the commissioner, he asked us, we had provided an initial site plan and an additional proposed change of use, which was recommended that we, we alter some of the parking, which was originally out front, Mr. Chairman, and they asked us to reconfigure some of that space to around the sides of the building, which we did, and also suggested that we add some landscaped areas. It was not our intention really to do any work, but they asked, at their request, which we have no issue with, adding some landscaped areas around the front will make the front a lot more attractive. Also going to spend upwards of half a million dollars on interior and exterior improvements. It'll just be some wrapping around the building, windows and interior, interior use. So other than the landscaped areas that were suggested for us, we really, we have no interest in doing any, any work on the property itself. There's no additions, no extensions of any part of the building itself. Because the last use was not consistent enough, still was a commercial use, but not consistent enough with what our use was, commissioner requested that we come to this board for, under 1470, for a change of use, a use variance, which, again, the use of this property, the hardship here is essentially, this building is really not suited for anything residential whatsoever. It's literally next door to the Shaw's, Obashawn Hardware District. I believe it's next to a commercial strip district where the next property over, there is some area that's sort of undeveloped as you come past our property going towards Shaw's, but right next to us is essentially the Shaw's Plaza. I think there's a Walgreens there as well right now. So our use, considering what was there most recently, which was this landscaped use with heavy equipment there, we have no, nothing but golf carts on the outside, and our sales and service would be inside. We're expecting to put in two lifts on the inside. I think there's one existing now. We'd be proposing to construct another lift inside and believe that certainly, it's certainly not more detrimental to what the uses were in the past, considering there was a fairly large-scale car dealership there. Granted, that goes back to 1990 with the upwards of 100, 125 actual motor vehicles there. Our site would be shielded from the public. We've got fencing, existing fencing around, again, that we're not asking to make any modifications to. Our golf cart exterior storage would be parked inside that, inside that fence line. There's also a gated area where they can be locked in the front at the ingress on the right of the building as you're looking at it, and then there's a gated area on the back where the, would prevent hopefully anyone from accessing the, the property itself. So we think, you know, Marion Road, it's really right down the street from here, it's a very busy street, it's a lot of heavy truck traffic that's going up and down that street as well as car traffic. When I visited with David just like last week, it's fairly noisy outside there. We don't believe that anybody would be, any neighbors would be substantially impacted by, you know, the use, certainly not going to hear any electric carts driving around outside. The gas carts are certainly no, no busier than the, the street traffic that's, that's occurring on the site. So with that, we would respectfully request the board consider this use variance. We're not open on Sundays. Our hours of operation would be Monday through Saturday, 8 to 4:30, so it's certainly not a very, we're not there late hours, we're there pretty much when the sun rises. Most of their busy season is May, starting now, May through, I think, August is their real busy season, and even then, they're not really getting substantial amount of deliveries. Deliveries are expected for these golf carts to be maybe twice a month. So it's, it's not a very busy operation, I don't think would be detrimental to the neighborhood, considering what was there.
All right. So we have two parts of this project, a use variance.
Yes, and site plan review.
Site plan review.
Correct.
The intention of the town lately, when you change the use, you go to a full site plan review, as well as the aesthetics of the building.
I'm sorry?
The aesthetics, the looks of the building.
Yes.
And all the buildings, if you want to change the use now, because we want to see better building, better town, better facades, everything, you have to work on that building.
And that, we proposed that.
So you're going to present the plan, showing us how you're going to, how's that building going to look? And the site plan review, you have to open an account and coordinate with our town engineer who's here tonight. You guys could exchange numbers, and he'll explain to your engineer what he needs. We have it on our website, we have a list for a site plan. And I know it's all paved area, I don't know what's going to happen with conservation, this is your problem with conservation, but okay with it the way it is, but it has to be improved. So I'm going to run by the board first, how do you feel about the variants? So these people know how they're handling. Are you okay with the var, do you feel okay to have sell golf cart there?
Yeah, I, I've driven by the place in Buzzards Bay.
I mean, it makes sense, the whole street's commercial.
Yeah.
Veronica, how do you feel about the variants?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. They have nice property in Buzzards Bay.
Right. Jimmy?
I think it's a good use of the property. I echo what you say, the, because they, because it automatically kicks in site plan review, we're going to have to, we're going to have to review what you're going to do, you know, you said you're going to put a half million dollars into the building.
Yes.
That could be a, that could be a $450,000 plasma cutter inside and, you know. So we need to know what you're going to do.
We did provide exterior elevations and, and plans with the, with the proposal, so we have essentially architectural plans and floor plans that we provided with the application, so that has what the exterior would actually look like, and, I'm sorry, yes, they are.
Richard, how do you think about the use, the van, the use of variants?
I'm good with it, just quick questions if I may.
Sure.
I do notice down in Buzzards Bay, it's probably because of the lot, it's all, you see all the golf carts. Now, you just explained that you were all putting them away in the back gated up areas. Is there any going to be displayed, or are you going to just use the big windows like the old Cranberry Chevrolet building and put your carts there, or are you going to creep them out on the front?
We'll do what, whatever we're asked to do.
I just want to re, you, he spelled out that there was nothing going to be outside, so I'm just asking, is anything going to creep out?
No carts out on display in the front of the building, they'll all.
And then as far as deliveries go, I, I noticed a lot of these big long trailers with stuff full of golf carts on them. Is there room in there to be able to bring them in, or are you going to be parking on the street or anything like that?
No, there's room to pull in on one side, right around the back of the building, pull out straight on the other side.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask you, why you would, why you don't want to display them? What's wrong, you know, not that it matters, but wouldn't that be better?
I didn't have an, just asking, I was just asking, I wasn't opposing to it.
You can display them, we're not against that.
If there's room, I, the issue for us, I guess, would be the proposed landscaped areas that, that commissioner had recommended that we, we put in would be in the front. We actually had parking out front there instead, so it would have been easier for us to be able to display vehicles if we had, we have room out there, but we're adding some, some landscaped areas out there, so I'm not sure if we can fit them.
I got to explain to you what the commissioner recommend, doesn't mean it's set in stone, just so you know.
Well, the, one of the issues would have been, which I completely understand, was that if our parking was out front, we would be backing out portions of it onto Marion Road, which we are avoiding at all costs. So there's a lot of room there, the public way is, is, there's no real, there's no curb cuts out there, we're going to put a couple of defined curb cuts on the corners, but it's really pretty soft between Marion Road and our property, but I certainly understand, I think, under site plan review, one of the recommendations is that not, not to back out.
Do you think you need to go before conservation?
I don't think so, because we're working, the only thing we're doing is these, if I don't, if you don't mind, the only thing we're doing to the site at all is these landscaped areas, that's it.
That's what you think, that's not site plan review.
Well, that's all we're proposing.
Right.
So, I mean, all this area is all paved, existing, and, you know, we're adding some of these permeable, permeable areas to that, so we're, all this, we really just didn't want to touch the site really at all.
Unfortunately, that's not going to happen, you're going to have to. That's what site plan review is. That's why, okay, the first hurdle, the board, apparently the board is on board with you, give you the variants, so that's, you get, you 50% there.
Okay.
Second hurdle, you got to open what you call, see, this is a proposal, lovely lady next to me, go see her in the office.
Yep.
You open a 53G account, and our consultant would take your application and comments would start, and that's when really the project starts. To make your life easy, engineer should contact him and see what do we expect. We expect a lot more than you propose.
Okay.
And I wish you best of luck. I think it's a great project, we'll do whatever we can to help, but we are very firm on bringing up old property to rehab, make them look nice for the town. But we'll give you whatever we can help, variances, little waivers here and there, we have no problem, but we need the project, we need buildings to look much better than they were sitting forever, as well as parking lot, drainage, all these things.
Are you able to vote on the variants tonight? Is that possible?
We can.
Without the site plan review?
You want to vote on one portion of it?
On just the use variants, of course we can.
I'd appreciate that.
On the use variants, not the site plan review.
Understood, that helps.
We go forward, and anyone in the audience want to speak against this matter, aga, for this matter?
For.
For this matter, okay, and support, how about against?
I'm sorry.
You are against? Come forward.
You got, you got to come up and speak into the microphone, ma'am.
I can't hear them.
Sit down, sit down, state your name and address.
Kathleen Mullins.
Yes.
173 Marion Road. My property, but that property on two sides.
Okay.
And there is water behind their property.
Right.
Which is my property. It's, we've always called it the swamp. It's the overflow from the reservoir for the Cranberry bogs. I don't remember, it's the bogs down by what used to be Wareham Auto.
Yep, those are the man bogs, and that's Mayor's Pond.
It's Mr. Sample telling you that.
I said those are the man, man farms bogs, and that's Mayor's Pond.
Man, yeah.
You live at 171 Marion Road?
Oh, 173.
Another house now, okay.
No.
I think that might be a.
We understand, we know.
There's a building with three shops in it.
I know this one.
And then my house, and there's.
So what's your real complaint? Is the traffic, the water, what is it?
I have no way to get to my property if they, there is a right of way for the shop, to park behind their shop, and for me to get into my property. And I have had experience with other companies that have been there, that they want to drive in, and their customers, oh, I'm only going to be in there a minute, and so forth. It's a right of way.
So you have a right of way at the Cranberry Chevy place?
Have a right of way to what?
And, and the property that used to be the Cranberry Chevrolet, you have a right of way on that property?
Yes, between Cranberry, what used to be Cranberry, it used to be Tam Motors.
Right.
Okay, between Tam Motors and my property, I have a right of way to get into my property because the shops do not belong to me.
Okay, so your house is right on Marion Road, is that shed in the backyard?
That my back, that's my backyard, my garage is back there, so forth.
And, and how do you go to that shed in the back now, or the garage? How do you drive in the back now?
By the right of way that's between.
They have to go across this.
Their building is and the strip, the three shops that are connected.
Okay, so you think your, your right of way isn't it on the three-shop property or on the dealership property? What do you think it is?
The shops, they are supposed to park.
I already did a title.
Facing the building, and the Cranberry Chevy between, if you park your car here, is the right of way behind it so that you can back out, so forth, any of the customers.
Okay, but you go through the shop, those three-shop property, or you go through the dealership? How do you get to your property?
I have to go between where they want to be in the three shops for me to get to my property.
All right, okay, all right, okay, I know it. So you have a right of way, we have to find out where's the right of way. Your engineer, you're the engineer, sir, or you?
This is the engineer.
Did you see any, any right of way in the land?
I have, I have mine.
One second.
I've run the title on this property, and we have a gated property that goes, this is pre-existing, and it was my building all the way to.
Turn that mic to you so you could, like, there's a mic right there.
Sorry.
I can't hear him.
Yeah, one.
Sorry.
And I can't see that.
We have a gate that goes from the corner of the property, this side, to this side, and then there's a clear path to her property. There's actually, there would actually be no way for her to get to her property from ours, because there's a gate that goes across here, so she's not, she's mistaken, she, she, she's getting in this way, which is fine.
Sir, the engineer, you didn't see any easement on the property? You have your engineer with you?
Yes.
Who's the engineer? Oh, you have a plan, okay.
Little story real quick, I bought my first S-10, S-10 truck from Cranberry Chevrolet.
S-10 Blazer?
Nope, little pickup truck.
Oh, the.
Brand new. So the guy says, you want to be, yep, you want to be careful, don't back out on the road. So what did I do? I backed up and I hit that damn telephone pole that's right in front of them shops and put a dent in my truck on the first day. So watch out for that telephone pole when you guys are backing out, because it's a pain in the neck and a pain in the bumper.
Good they're all looking at it.
Do you want to bring this here?
No.
It's good that they're all looking at it, but the board is voting.
They don't vote, I'm glad you got them.
All the people that are looking at it have, have no vote.
This is us, sir, counselor, you want to?
I can't, I.
Neither one has to look at it, not, but it's nice to share.
Yeah, yeah, we want them to see it.
See what it says, it doesn't look like it's a recorded plan, and it's not dated, and it's not signed.
I'm going to ask her a question if it's all right with you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ma'am, in your deed to your home, do you have a right of way in your deed that's recorded at the Registry of Deeds?
Oh, Ken, I can't tell you, I have to show them my deeds.
Mr. Attorney that's representing the applicant, in your search of the title on this purchase and sale agreement.
Everybody back to their seat, please, sit back in your seat.
In your title search for this purchase and sale agreement, did you discover a recorded right of way granted to the neighbor?
I don't believe so.
Okay, ma'am.
Yeah.
I believe what you have here is the potential, it's the potential, but I don't think you have a right, you have the potential for a constructive easement, that would mean you'd have to take them to court and sue them because you've openly and notoriously used their land for 20 years without any notice telling you that you can't. I don't believe that's the case. I happen to have personal knowledge of this property. What you've had is you've had a very generous neighbor who's granted you a great deal of courtesy. What happens on your property is the clients that come to your rental, commercial rental units that are built in an MR30 zone, that are allowed to happen by special permits, they park up against your building, and in order for them to maneuver out of the parking space where they park, they have to back into the neighbor's property, but if somebody parks in the neighbor's property, it's hard for them to maneuver. I've been well apprised of this in, in the process of looking at this property myself. I think you may have a new neighbor here who may work with you and may be nice to you, but legally, from my personal knowledge, what you've claimed, you have no right to. They could actually put a fence up and stop you completely from going on their property. They could put a chain link fence up and very much harm your ability to rent your property.
No, I don't own both properties. A Gordon Smith owned the properties, and he rented to the shop, and he rented the house to my husband and I.
So maybe you have the easement from Gordon, not from the dealership.
Yeah, I don't think it's possible. I don't, again, I don't think there's any room, she'd have to go onto our property and then go.
Yeah, that's what's been happening over, historically, it's been happening, and they've been, and historically, they, they did it, but doesn't mean that they, they did it, they didn't do it without notice.
Mostly because that area left of our building and, and to the adjacent property is just all wide open, it's all, like I said, there's no, there's no curb cuts, and the fencing that would be put up would be put up by the three-shop owner, it wouldn't be put up by us. We wouldn't, I, I don't, we wouldn't have.
You have no desire to?
No, because we're using, you know, we're, we're using the gate.
No, I didn't say you would, I didn't, I didn't say, I said you had the right.
I don't believe that they would have a desire to put it up there, because it doesn't really benefit us or the neighbor.
No, it's detrimental to both parcels, I get it.
So, I'm sorry?
A gate where?
We have a gate on, on our property at the rear to.
I'm familiar with it.
To keep the inventory there, so we have no issue with that.
Ma'am, I, I think your best bet, you should hire a lawyer to, to look into it, but for right now, we can't hold this process until, until we have legal, right now, apparently the engineer and lawyer say you don't have right over there, that, so you best bet get a lawyer or engineer to represent you.
I don't even know who owned the property beside me.
We have to make a vote to go beyond 10 o'clock.
Okay, we'll vote for another 15 minutes. Can we get a motion?
I don't want to agree to it.
Motion, wait, ma'am, we're motion to, to extend the hearing 15 minutes, second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It's closed. On the variants, what's the issues?
Move to grant a variance for the change of use.
Okay, we have a use variance. All right. On the variance, anyone else want to speak against this matter? Okay. Against, none. Why don't we give gentlemen, let's give them variance. Why not?
I think it's prudent to give a variance, encourage them to do their site plan.
All right. Let's close the public piece of the variance and leave.
Just on the, no further discussion on the variance with the public.
Right.
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It's closed. On the variance, what's the issues?
Move to grant a variance for the change of use.
Okay, we have a use variance motion to grant by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Veronica. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Thank you.
You good with the variance?
Yes.
When do you want to come back for site plan review? How long you think you need to?
You need your engineer to draw this all up, show drainage.
Drainage. You got to discuss with Mr. right there. Stand right there. Take his number and discuss with him.
Gentlemen, from Allen and Major?
Allen Major, yes.
We get to know him very well.
So how much time you need?
Thank you, ma'am.
Four weeks.
Four weeks.
Find out who owns the building next to me. Find out what they feel about it.
They got, they got the same notice you got, ma'am. If they had an objection, they'd be, tonight's the night for them to be here to object.
You could go to the town hall and look.
It was just so.
They got the same notice as you. And if you, I'm sorry that you're confused. So you can go to the town hall and go to the assessor's office and ask them, and they'll tell you.
All right. How about June 26, Counselor?
I'm sorry?
June 26.
June 26.
All right, very well. Let's continue to June 26.
Thank you very much.
The faster you coordinate with Allen Major, the faster we get you going.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Motion to.
We have to, we have to vote on it, but we will. Don't worry about it. Motion, motion to grant a continuance to June 26.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself. So we see gentleman on the 26.
Matt.
Any other discussion? I don't think somebody want to discuss anything.
I think I had the same thing.
Wait, there's one more. Doesn't go in that file.
Oh, oh, hold on. Oh, we got.
We got the one that we tabled.
We table, Trito Road.
No!
6-24.
We tabled the.
We still got.
11 minutes, all right. What did I, I think I wrote it down. Hold on. Hold on. Where am I?
Three-Tow Road.
I don't know. Do you have it on the back of that?
Outside, please.
6-24.
All right, Trito Road.
June 30.
June 30. Let's continue, Trito Road. You got to contact this guy. Tell him get involved.
The last time, I remember he wasn't here. We continued it for, I think it was site plan review reasons. So I don't know, maybe he.
Phil, the Trito Road came before, has been in touch with you?
They have, Mr. Chair, they haven't been in touch with me, but we issued our peer review to them. They haven't responded to it yet.
As, for the record, a lot of times what will happen is you'll grant somebody temporary relief. They feel as though their problem's gone, and they don't do anything about it until it becomes a problem again.
How long ago did you issue the response?
Eight to giddy April, maybe?
Oh, a while ago.
Weeks ago.
I'd like, I'd like to request, respectfully request, because he's not required to do it, Commissioner to send a reminder to this applicant that the clock is ticking. They're not showing up. Mr. Commissioner, you're not obligated to do it, but would you be willing to send him a letter or give him a phone call? Huh?
You're killing me.
Kill him?
You're killing me.
Oh, that's our, you we don't care about. Just, just a phone call, just something. Just to let him know that the clock's ticking.
At least, I would say 48 hours.
And we're going to continue that to June 12?
All right. Why don't we, on Trito Road, we'll continue this time. Sonia, you got to reach that guy.
I will reach out there tomorrow.
On the 12.
Can we continue on past the 12th? I don't want to see another applicant on the 12th.
I thought you said the 26th.
We're gonna.
It's kind of been a night.
That's why I told him, push it to the 26th. We've got too many 12s already.
Everybody, please. We're going to continue this matter to June 12, right? Next meeting?
Hey, just remember, we were out here with Mannix, and we were in here until 10:30 some nights, man. It was long with that gentleman.
All right. June 12, Sonia will reach Trito Road owner, whatever the name is, and whatever his name, you tell him on the 12. If he doesn't buy the 12, he, from now until the 12, he got to get in touch with the peer review and come here on the 12 to solve this matter. Otherwise, we will shut him down again. Okay? That fair?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Let's motion, let's make a motion on that, on that continuance and what we discussed. Thank you, Phil.
So I make a motion?
No.
Go ahead, Jim.
No, no.
I'll second. No, you go right ahead.